Okay, it's 6:42. I'm gonna call this meeting of the Longdale City Council to order. I'm gonna ask our Madam City Clerk to please give the roll call.
Mayor Protan Hoffman-Gorman?
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Here.
Councilmember Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Kearney?
Here.
Mayor Pullan Miles?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, Madam. I'm gonna ask Councilmember Pat Kearney to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and Pastor Matthew Orbison from the Longdale Wesleyan Church will lead us in a word of inspiration.
Please place your right hand over your heart. Gentlemen, remove your hats if you have them on, and repeat along with me. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Please remain standing.
Pastor Orbison, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Today is the 279th birthday of Washington, our first president, and I'd like to just say thank you for honoring our government by taking yesterday off and the traditions that we have, and you as civil servants and elected members, I thank you for your commitment to this city. I'd like to open us in a word. Almighty God, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. We come to you this hour for asking you for blessing. Help us with our gathering together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm, strengthen our confidence in who you have made us to be, set us free from comparison in order so that we might work together effectively. Bless this meeting today, all those present in this room and from those watching and listening on television, as well as the lives of those in which we'll encounter afterwards. Ready us to make every moment count in your awesomeness, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor, for those beautiful words of inspiration. Thank you for being here tonight. Okay, I want to invite Captain Allen. Yes, sir, to give the public safety report. Captain Allen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report from February 7th through February 22nd. On February 12th, at about 12:58 a.m., Deputy Dominguez responded to 162nd Street and Inglewood Avenue regarding a male vandalizing several parked vehicles. Deputy Dominguez located and arrested a male adult who had broken two vehicle windows and took property out of an unlocked parked vehicle. The suspect was arrested for felony vandalism and booked at South Los Santos Station. On February 17th, at approximately 11:00 p.m., Deputy Furman conducted a traffic stop near Rosecrans Avenue and Hawthorne Boulevard regarding several traffic violations. Upon exiting the vehicle, the deputy saw the front passenger place an object under the backseat area. When she contacted the driver, she immediately smelled the strong odor of marijuana emitting from inside the vehicle. After attaining the three occupants in the vehicle for a narcotic investigation, she located a unregistered loaded firearm, nine-millimeter Glock, along with two large baggies of marijuana. The front passenger claimed ownership of the illegal items and was arrested for carrying an unregistered firearm and marijuana possession. Also, back on February 2nd, I'm happy to say that at approximately 11:00 a.m., homicide detectives arrested a male adult regarding the murder that occurred on July 7th, 2021. The murder occurred in the 4700 block of 167th Street at approximately 1:20 p.m. The victim was a male juvenile Longdale resident. The suspect appeared in Inglewood Juvenile Court on February 4th and pled not guilty. The suspect was a juvenile at the time of the murder and was also a Longdale resident. In regards to crime, the city's statistics to start the year are looking really good. Robberies are down 80%, aggravated assaults are down 20%, larceny thefts are down 51%, and grand theft autos are down 15%. The overall crime rate is down 34% compared to last year at this time. This concludes my report, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Okay, are there any questions of Captain Allen's report?
I just have one comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Captain Allen, I would like to publicly say to you, last night, I had to call up to the sheriff's station, and the person that answered the phone was absolutely amazing. She gave the name Carter, and I could actually understand it when she said it. I just want my thank yous to be heard by her. That's exactly the customer service, and what she demonstrated last night was exactly the customer service that I think that we're all entitled to all the time, and she is an absolute example of what makes the Sheriff's Department great.
Oh, well, thank you. I'll definitely pass that along to her. I really appreciate that comment.
Okay, with that, we want to thank you for the report and thank you for giving these stats for the beginning of the year as well, Captain.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, with that, we will move our agenda along. We're now on oral communications. Oral communications is when you have the opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda. If you would like to speak to this body on items that pertaining to the hearing, that will be handled later in the agenda. But for right now, this is items that are not on the agenda. If you would like to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda, if you would just approach the podium when it becomes your turn, if you would give your name first, we would really appreciate that. At about two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on. They'll give you the signal to start wrapping things up. Mr. Rendles, welcome back.
Randall Abram. Tonight's consent calendar starts this year's fireworks process all over again with the approval of fireworks permits for booths. I'm not here to talk about the approval of those. Coincidentally, several weeks ago, I submitted a public records request for the financial reports by the nonprofits as to what revenues were received and how those funds were dispersed last year. As in past year, the winner of all of this is a fireworks manufacturer. Total fireworks sales in 2021 were $337,684, with $164,270 going to the distributors. After deducting the money paid to the fireworks distributors and their setup costs, the combined net income for the seven booths was $136,106. The average net income for the nonprofits then works out to $19,443. Although the municipal code requires a breakdown clearly showing how the funds were spent in support of youth and charitable activities, many of these financial reports by these groups are not clear at all. One of the groups that did show clear spending of funds was Longdale Little League that spent money on such things as uniforms and renovating the bathroom and other facilities where they play baseball. Out of over $14,000 in funds, one group only indicated $53 spent on Halloween candy. Out of $11,872 spent to date, one church pastor was paid $10,802 for being a youth leader. Another group spent money on pens, a TV, and a soundbar. Although the municipal code requires that a minimum of two organizations shall be audited on proper expenditures of these funds, no audit was conducted for the 2021 fireworks fund. These reports dealing in expenditures were required by the beginning of December. At that time, the expenditures of these groups totaled $61,475, with over $79,815 still left outstanding. After this report, Longdale requires no other reporting and no way to determine if expenditures meet the municipal code requirements and how these benefit the youth groups or the community in general. This whole process of accounting of the funds must be tightened up so that it becomes clear how funds are spent to actually benefit Longdale youth. While the average debt profits works out to $19,443, what is the cost to the city to maintain this program? City staff time and coordinate all of this, such as reviewing all the documentation required to set up, inspecting the booths, and receive all these financial documentation could be time better spent. Increased law enforcement is another cost. Booths maintained by adults provides no opportunity to the youth and community in learning the value of a dollar. These organizations need to research the surrounding cities and follow their example in funding youth groups in a more wholesome manner than fireworks sales. One website lists 71 fundraising ideas for youth groups. It is time to move away from promoting a product that is toxic and dangerous to humans. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on the oral communications, public comments on items that are not pertaining to the hearing?
Gary Adams, I appear again before this honored body to express my total dissatisfaction with the ongoing continual illegal operation by RJ's Construction or Materials on Manhattan Beach Boulevard. It's recently come to my attention they've been operating for an extended period without a site plan, which is illegal, and could, if the city chooses to, could revoke their business license for this fact. Our esteemed new city manager is very aware of the situation, and I trust we'll get some more corrective action taken. I'm not saying the city hasn't done anything. They have issued some citations, but they've been totally ineffective to date. The ongoing operation consists of operating semi-tractor trailer rigs in excess of 80,000 pounds overloaded on residential streets. Furthermore, there's a mistaken thought that there must be access to the rear of the commercial lots facing Manhattan Beach Boulevard. That is totally false. If you look at the original city overlay, they never had access until the previous owner, Deeford, bulldozed the residential properties facing Manziel and Gravilla and paved them solid with concrete, which violates other codes as well. So now, these huge trucks pull through the commercial lots, through the residential lots, onto both residential streets of Manziel and Gravilla. I've got pictures of both. Furthermore, they illegally park their trailers on Manhattan Beach Boulevard on the red line. They finally got a ticket for this about a week and a half ago. But this is an ongoing continuous violation of business practice and the city codes and zoning and so forth. It just goes on and on. It needs specific attention to correct this and stop it. These people apparently feel they can get away with anything, and so far, they've been successful in doing that. But it needs to be stopped. It adversely affects the residents on the residential streets. We have unnecessary noise. We have unnecessary vibration. We have unnecessary air pollution. They spill materials on Manziel, which the flow on the street flows north into the street drain, and that allows basically illegal dumping of Federal Safe Water Act. And that has never been addressed, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak to the -- yes, ma'am. A librarian, yes, ma'am.
Hello and good evening. My name is Michelle Pino. I am the new library manager at Longdale Library, and I'm here to give you some updates. We continue to offer the testing site in partnership with the Department of Public Health, and this is stationed right outside the library on Tuesdays from 12 to 7, Wednesday through Friday, 10 to 5. We will start having in-person programming starting Wednesday, March 2nd, and we will start with our storytime for toddlers. And this will be offered Wednesdays at 11:30, just right before the library opens to the public, just to the safety of the children who are not vaccinated yet. I encourage parents to sign up early because we do have a capacity limit for that program. I am also very excited to announce that we have added more sitting in the library. We were giving the thumbs up to increase our capacity, and this was starting today, actually. In the beginning of the month, we were seeing a lot of families visiting the library, but this past week, we've also seen an increase of teens walking into the library. So it's really nice to kind of have that feeling of going back to normal. So little by little, we're getting there and seeing the community returning to the library. That's all I have to announce.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this body on the oral communications? Okay, seeing none, we will close the oral communications portion and let's bring up to DICE for any comments from the council. Let's start with Councilman Pat Kearney.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the lady and gentleman that spoke tonight. I'll address Gary's issue. I do have the same concerns, Gary. I see the trucks there all the time. Some are parked on the other side of the street, which is legal parking. I see gravel, sand in the street. I see both streets blocked off, so maybe our new city manager and most of his services and maybe JRT's department get their heads together. And if we need to, or we need be, we pull their permits for 30 days, maybe that'll wake them up. With that, I pass it on.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Suarez?
Thanks. I just want to thank everybody that came out tonight and those that gave your comments. I'll touch on one. I'll touch on the fireworks process. I would like to see some clarity on how those funds are being used. I don't think that -- I think the pandemic probably, you know, we were a little bit short-staffed, so I can understand, you know. But going forward, I would like to see more transparency on that process because I do see it's on our agenda, and we'll speak to that later. But, you know, I am curious how some of those organizations are using the funds. And with that, I'll pass it along.
Very good. Councilwoman Cuevas?
Thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking. Randall, I do agree some of the funds are not being used the way they should be, but we'll discuss that later. Shaun, if we could, you know, pay attention at the RJ. I have also seen a lot of things that shouldn't be on Manhattan. And Michelle, welcome to Longdale. Thank you.
Madam Mayor Protan Hoffman-Gorman?
I'm just going to say thank you to the three speakers, and I agree with Pat, Bernadette, and Ms. Surly on all three that they spoke. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to thank the speakers as well for their contributions, their comments tonight as well. I do, too, like to see, as well, like to see the clarification on the expenditures of the community organizations to ensure that they are spending the monies, the revenues, I should say, properly to reinvest in our community and particularly reinvest in our young folks. And it should be clearly spelled out that all the expenditures were towards that end. So if we can get some clarifications on that, that would be most helpful. So thank you, Mr. Randall, for bringing that to our attention. Also, yeah, I would join you as well with the RJ Construction. We just need to make sure that they're operating according to their license and they're operating as good neighbors and not taking up parking when it's not appropriate for them to do so and illegal for them to do so, and making sure they are adhering to whatever the conditions that were placed upon them when they received their license and their operating permit. So we would definitely take a look at that to make sure that's happening. Also, Madam Librarian, thank you for giving us a report on the programs that's going to resume. Oh, there you go. That's going to resume there on Wednesday at the library. We thank you for re-engaging the communities and making sure the communities know that not only we're providing the vaccination. Is it vaccination or testing?
Testing.
Testing. That we're providing a testing for COVID-19, which is still a very real thing in our community, so thank you for that service. And yes, it is refreshing to see the teenagers returning. I do see teenagers walking in and out of the facility of the library, so that's great to have the teenagers back because, you know, when you have the teenagers back, that means you officially in business when the teenagers show up. So we want to thank you for your service to the community. With that, I would close, rather, public comments and comments from the council. Next item on our agenda is the consent calendar. There may be a desire to remove one item from the consent calendar. Let's see what's the desire of this board.
Hi, Mayor. I'd like to see, number one, continue, hold and continue because I have some serious questions in a couple of these groups. So can we continue to do further research on these groups?
Okay, let's ask the staff, would there be any harm in continuing this? Which department? I'm not sure if you --
Mr. Mayor and Council, I believe it's Finance is running the first part of the leg of the item number -- we're talking about item number one, fireworks?
Fireworks, yes.
Right. Well, we have a time, we do have some time constraints with community development, but we can work on doing that research and bring that back.
Okay, so it sounds like there won't be any harm in carrying this over to the next meeting?
I don't think so. We can get it back.
Okay, without objections, we should carry the fireworks item on the consent calendar over for the next council meeting without objection. If no objections, I will entertain a motion to adopt the remainder of the consent calendar.
Mayor, this is Pat. I make a motion to accept two and three as written on the consent calendar.
Okay.
Well, second --
So the motion's been made by Kearney that we approve the remaining portion of the consent calendar, and the second by Cuevas. Is there any discussion on the remainder of the consent calendar? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, would you conduct the vote on the consent calendar item? Yeah, the consent calendar. Okay, right, absolutely, I have to vote. I didn't know you -- I didn't know we said everybody vote, okay. Okay, our last meeting was a Zoom, so. There was no buttons.
For the consent calendar, motion passes.
Thank you kindly, ma'am. She said you had to vote. I'm like, yeah, yeah. She said, well, do it. Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, the next item on our agenda happens to be a public hearing. Okay. So this is a continuation of a public hearing from an appeal case number 21 through 25. This item is back before the City Council tonight for a final public hearing. I believe Ms. Chavez, our acting community development director, will have a report. Let's have a report, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor Pullan Miles and members of the City Council. Today, I'm going to be presenting to you case number 2125, which is an appeal for the, from the, appealing the Planning Commission's decision to deny case number 2017 for the development of a new 7,779 square foot express car wash facility on a general commercial zone property located at 15413 and 15425 Hawthorne Boulevard. On July 28, 2021, the Planning Commission adopted the resolution 2015 to deny the case number 2017 and requesting approval, which was requesting approval of a special use permit and a development permit to construct a 7,779 square foot single-story express car wash facility. On August 11, 2021, the applicant, Timothy Berger, filed a timely appeal to the Planning Commission's decision of denying the project. On October 4, 2021, the City Council then opened a public hearing and decided to continue the item, requesting for additional information. On November 1st, the City Council received additional information from city staff, the applicant, and the public, and the city manager then requested a continuance to provide the City Council with additional information about the economic impacts of the project. Due to the separation of the city managers from the city, additional time was then required to complete the analysis, and so, at its meeting of December 6, the City Council further continued the matter to this meeting with direction to city staff to bring the matter to a conclusion. At its meeting of January 18 and February 7, the City Council determined that the matter should be heard in person rather than via remote access. Therefore, the public hearing was continued to this meeting to allow for an in-person participation by the applicant and the public and a final decision by City Council. At this time, city staff is providing such information and has been able to gather so that the information can be fully assessed and then presented to the City Council for its final determination on this matter. As part of the City Council's request, an economic impact analysis was prepared, which includes a qualified analysis of the project's potential impacts. Some of the key points from the analysis are that the proposed car wash would generate approximately 24% of the project's tax and approximately 11% of the sales tax revenues of the potential mixed-use development, considered by the housing element as a superior use for the site. While then foregoing percentages representing, the foregoing percentages represent a significant gap, the annual difference between the two would be less than $20,000. The applicant then agreed that it would enter into a development agreement with the city to close its financial gap. Industry leaders in planning and urban development have published extensive case study research showing that walkable mixed-use designs will catalyze nearby real estate investment and development activity. Looking comprehensively, rather than just in a subject side, the car wash project lands in a weaker economic position than a higher opportunity mixed-use alternative. The project as proposed imposes an opportunity cost of the city's sense of place in the surrounding area, which with the other factors noted about contributes to a negative positioning for the city in competing with the sub-regional market for future tenants and in attracting ancillary investment, jobs, and visitors. That concludes staff report. With that, I'll pass it along to our city attorney.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez. And Council, I think Ms. Chavez has done a fantastic job carrying this forward to you through some tough circumstances. I just wanted to put a few things on the record, as much for the public tonight as for the five of you. There has been additional information submitted to the city clerk's office, to community development, and directly to the council. The council has had a chance to review all of that. The information has also been added to the record. Information that's not actually attached to the staff report has been provided at the council seats and at the table in the back for public review, and it will be considered all part of the record that the council is looking at tonight. The staff report, council gives essentially three options, and this is on page two. And the options would be to approve the project, to deny the project, or to require that the project be revised for reconsideration. While tonight, we are asking that you make a final decision, no matter what you do, we're going to have to bring back to you a resolution memorializing that decision. If you decide to approve the project, the resolution would include California Environmental Quality Act findings, which means we'll have to do the appropriate analysis based on the nature of the project, and it would have to have conditions as part of a special use permit. If you deny the project, again, we would have to make sure that the findings in the resolution properly echo what it is that you tell us tonight or your reasons for denial. And obviously, if you're going to revise or direct us to revise the project, we'll be working with the applicant. In light of the three options and the fact that there's not a resolution before you tonight, your discussion tonight is perhaps the most important part of what will go on. So I would just encourage all of you to listen to the applicant. The applicant will have 15 to 20 minutes to speak tonight to make sure that they can fully remind you of the project, of their vision, and what they see. Members of the public will all have three minutes to speak. I know there are lots of members of the public here. After they speak, the mayor will close the public hearing, and that's your time to talk. And what you say is incredibly important because whatever it is that you say will lead to your vote, and what you've said on the record is what we're going to use to help make the findings in the resolution that we bring back to you. And that ultimate resolution will be what decides the fate of this. Just for the members of the public, if you do wish to speak, please do so when the mayor calls for public comment. It's important that the council hear from you, but when the mayor does close public comment and it's time for their consideration, really, only the council will speak. Even the city manager myself will be quiet unless they ask a question. So that would not be the best time for the public to pipe up or for the applicant's team to pipe up. Please do speak when the mayor calls. And if you don't want to speak, you want to watch, that's wonderful as well. Mr. Mayor, I think I've laid out the process and what we're really looking for tonight. If you have any questions, I'm here. Otherwise, I'll just stay out of the way. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Before we proceed, let me ask the council, are there any questions, technical clarifications of the staff report or the city attorney's report before we proceed? Okay. Seeing none, what I would do now is 7:11, and I will open the public hearing. The public hearing is now hereby open. I'm going to ask the applicant to approach if they would like the opportunity to and make your presentations for about 20 minutes, unless provide any comments you would like to provide.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. It's good to see you all again. My name is Sherry Bonstall from Jeffers Mangles, and I represent the applicant, Tim Berger, of Lawndale Express Car Wash. At the last city council hearing, the council had questions regarding the tax revenues from the car wash project, and the applicant committed to paying the difference between the taxes to the city from the car wash use and for other feasible uses on the site through a development agreement. We confirm this commitment to you tonight. As stated, the city prepared an economic analysis by Will Dan dated January eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, that's in your staff report. We also prepared an economic analysis by Cosmont Companies dated January two thousand twenty-two and submitted it to the city council. The report identified a fiscal benefit to the city of approximately one point six-seven million dollars over thirty years, and this includes a payment of approximately one point one-five million dollars over thirty years through the development agreement itself. And I will let Will Sohl from Cosmont Companies summarize the findings.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro-Tim, council members, staff. My name is Will Sohl, I'm with Cosmont Companies. We're a real estate finance and economic development advisory firm. We're based in the South Bay. We do serve municipalities, counties, and private sector clients throughout California, and we did, at the request of the applicant, prepare a net fiscal impact analysis. And so we looked at the proposed project, and we looked at a few alternatives as well. In looking at the proposed project, we estimate that the net fiscal benefit to the city would be about eighteen thousand dollars per year, and when we measure the benefit, we take a look at the gross revenues, so property tax, sales tax, things like that. We compare that to the expenditures that we expect a city to incur to support that use, things like public safety, public works, those types of uses. We take the gross, we subtract the, the negatives, excuse me, subtract the expenses, and we get the net number. So net for the proposed project, about eighteen thousand dollars per year. We also ran a retail scenario that was a hypothetical kind of standalone retail development, perhaps a few tenants, and estimated based on that use that the city would realize net revenues about forty-nine thousand dollars per year. That's based primarily on sales tax. Obviously, you've got a supplemental sales tax rate here in the city, and so that helps you under that scenario. And then finally, we looked at a mixed-use residential scenario, contemplated forty-one units as currently allowed and about six thousand square feet of residential, or excuse me, of commercial use on the ground floor, and that netted about fifty-six thousand dollars per year in net revenue to the city. So if you take a comparison of the highest, in this case, the mixed-use, fifty-six, minus or compare it to the lowest at eighteen thousand, your net difference is about thirty-eight thousand dollars per year, as we best estimate. As has been indicated, we understand that developer has proposed to make up that difference for the proposed use. So that's the, that's the net fiscal piece. I think the other piece that is certainly before you tonight is, is this the right use for the property? And is this what you want to see on the property? And that's a much more difficult question, certainly. We understand that there's a desire to see mixed use on that property, that that is what the city would like to see, certain members of the community perhaps, and you get to control land use. You get to say, here is what we want to allow on our site. But the corollary to that, the flip side of that, is that the landowner and the market get to dictate what gets built there. And so as we understand it, the landowner has tried for about six years to market this property, to find a, a use and a user for the property. I think about four years ago, they brought a proposed use of medical office on the site, and that was not desired, and so they pursued, not desired by the city, and so they pursued other uses. Several years later, and now we are, excuse me, several years later, they had a restaurant use that was contemplated, but the economics of that did not work for the restaurateur. And now here we are today with a, a use that they're proposing that does work economically for the site and the land, and is almost in compliance with the land. Certainly, you've created a box as to what's permitted, this is right outside that box, right? It's a gray area, it's a conditional use permit, that's what they're seeking your approval. The, the option or the opportunity and the desire to have mixed use is a worthy one. It'd be a nice use, I understand the desire for that. The difficulty is that, as we look at it, the market's just not there yet for it. You have some areas south of the four oh five that we've seen plans generated for potential mixed use. We understand some of those properties are for sale. We'll see if those actually get developed into those uses. The market fundamentals are on or below the bubble in many cases, and sometimes they're slightly above the bubble, but we don't expect those same developments to be on this site or at this particular location in the near future, absent changes in the marketplace. Further, you've got a property owner that's interested in a long-term ground lease, and that use is not complementary with the long-term ground lease. You won't see typically a, a mixed-use developer, developer property on a lease, and that's the property owner's right to do that. What's unique about the car wash use is that it's actually a pretty low capital intensity in terms of a land use, and because of that potentially interim land use, that if this is allowed to proceed, you will see a car wash developed, and maybe in twenty years from now, that may not be the use that makes the most economic sense at that location. You may have had success in attracting and, and encouraging mixed-use development to move through the corridor to an extent that promotes and facilitates the redevelopment of this site into that mixed use when that market is appropriate, perhaps twenty years down the road. Because of the low capital intensity of this development, it's not unreasonable to expect, as that market changes, for this land use to change as well, that it's, it's much less static than if you, say, invested fifty million dollars into a building. That building would be expected to be there for fifty to a hundred years versus this land use is more flexible and potentially interim in use. So with that, I, I understand the desires to potentially have a different vision on this site, but the reality is that today, as we sit here, and probably for the next many years, we, you know, we can't project everything certainly, but probably for an extended period of time, this car wash use is a viable use, and it's the use that's available today. If it's, if this has declined and turned down, the site could sit the way that it sits today for many more years. I understand it's a difficult decision, but I invite you to consider that, that this is a productive use of the property. As proposed to the development agreement, the city would receive revenue equivalent to the desired use, and you've got a, an opportunity here to see development in an attractive way on the site. I am happy to answer any questions you might have about our analysis, about net fiscal impact, about the revenue numbers, things like that, as well as anything about the real estate market that you, you might want some input on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for that presentation. Yes, ma'am.
We have a little bit more to discuss.
No, go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
So, in summary, we request that the city council approve the development permit and special use permit for the car wash for the following reasons. Number one, the car wash project has significant support in Lawndale. As you recall, a few months ago, we submitted over two hundred letters and cards from the people that live in Lawndale near the project that want a high-end efficient car wash on the site. Second, Tony Torres submitted a petition with several signatures purportedly opposing the project. However, that petition contains all false statements about the project. That petition was submitted to you, you're able to review the language in it, and it, and the, it specifically states that the car wash will attract people playing loud music, create litter and trash, cause driving in neighborhood streets, and waste water. All of these statements are false because the project will be a quiet and clean car wash compared to other car washes that are currently in, in Lawndale, and users will arrive from Hawthorne Boulevard. They won't be driving around on the side streets to get here. The car wash uses less water than the other hand car washes, and all of the water is recycled, unlike the other car washes as required under the Calgary code. The petition also states that the neighbors want restaurants, which is reasonable on the site, but these restaurants are not coming to Lawndale, and we tried, our, the owner of the property tried for a long time to, to bring a restaurant to the site. The property owner, the Giles family, has not been able to find high-end restaurants to come here despite marketing the site specifically for that use. The city council cannot deny a requested use on the site merely because they prefer another use, especially if that use is not feasible. The city staff report stated the project met the development requirements for setbacks, landscaping, lot coverage, site configuration, massing height building requirements for the general commercial zone, and it satisfied the design guidelines. It's compliant with the general plan because the Lawndale municipal code specifically states that the purpose and spirit of this title is to encourage the development and maintenance of quality car washes in the city. If you're going to develop a quality car wash, this is the perfect location to do it, you know, near the freeway and to generate people coming to the site and being able to go to the commercial uses that are in the neighborhood. There's no evidence in the record to support requiring a housing project on the property, and as we have previously stated, you cannot use the site for your arena allocation because it was, it's no longer eligible. And even if it was eligible, as was previously stated, the housing is infeasible on the site because no developer is going to get funding to construct a housing project in this location on leased land. So in addition, none of the comments regarding CQ in the Chatten-Brown letter have any merit. They do not provide any substantial evidence in the record to support them. We submitted a, a letter discussing each of their claims in detail to you that I'm sure that you have reviewed. So it's not clear who's leading the opposition to the car wash because Doug Carson's did not identify what individuals his firm is representing, and the Lawndale Community Association is not an organization that has registered with the Secretary of State. So I encourage you, when he comes up to speak, to specifically ask him who he is representing currently. The project will provide significant community benefits. This includes an environmentally sustainable use that is efficient and quiet. It will redevelop the underutilized lot that will otherwise remain blighted. The city will benefit from the significant tax base, and the applicant has committed to providing the fiscal benefit of one point six-seven million dollars over thirty years, including a payment of one point one-five million over thirty years through the development agreement. A denial of the project will result in a loss of significant funds for the city, and everyone has testified that Tim Berger will be an engaged member of the community who will positively contribute to the city's growth, and he is committed to it. And I now like Tim to speak directly to you. Thank you very much for your time.
Yes, sir.
Council members, welcome back, Sean. We, when we started this endeavor back in June of two thousand nineteen, we had indicated to Sean that we wanted to not only make and build the nicest car wash in the city of Lawndale, but the nicest car wash in the South Bay, and I think with, I think we achieved that goal here with, with support of the city. Tonight, we're also proposing the financial agreement. You know, we, we went into this knowing, and we spoke to Sean about this early on, that car washes don't generate revenue for the city, but we wanted to make sure that we did generate revenue for the city. So with the help of Cosmont, we were able to determine the amount of money that the city would get on other uses for the site, and we're committing to, to match the full amount, which is even higher than the report that the city had, of almost one point seven million over the life of the lease. The Giles family has worked on this vote for seven years. You know, Brad Giles has, has personally worked to lease this site diligently, and it wasn't until two thousand nineteen when we entered into this agreement that we've been working on to finish the build-out. So I want to ask you today for a yes vote, not just for me and the car wash, but also for the Giles family, and let them develop their site that has, has not been the prettiest site in the city into something that looks, something that you'll be proud of. So I want to thank you for your time, and thank you for your vote. Thank you.
So does that conclude the applicant's presentation? Okay, thank you for that presentation. Let me open it up for now at this moment for any members of the public who wants to speak on this item. If you want to speak on this item, just after this gentleman who just stood up, you can come after him and, and just approach the podium and just give your presentation. If you will, give us your name for the, the record.
Carrie Adams, forty-plus-year resident of the city of Lawndale. I believe it was Will Rogers that made a statement which is somewhat comical but more true than comedy, when he said that figures don't lie, but liars figure.
Let me, let me, let me insert this, I'll give you your time back. I forgot to, to mention that we're going to give you approximately three minutes, and but if you can wrap it up in fewer than three minutes, that would be greatly appreciated. But once again, when the amber light comes on, that's your signal to start wrapping things up. Yield back your thirty seconds.
That being said, it is my understanding, belief, and contention that the city has a legal requirement to meet state law that says that we are to provide more low-income or immediate income housing. This does nothing in regards to meeting state law. So I would think that we would be open to litigation for, if this thing's approved. Furthermore, there is, it's, the whole thing is based on a misconception that Giles family has done everything they can to do the property. They want to lease the property, they don't want to build nothing. So that is a fallacy right there, and when their firm that did their analysis, they looked only at leasing the property. They did not do a study of building multifamily with commercial, which is much more profitable to the city in the terms of taxes, and it provides family dwellings that are very much needed, and I would contend that that is a much higher use for the property, which by law we are required to look at the highest, best use for the property, and this ain't it, folks, it ain't it. So when they make a statement that it's not feasible to have multifamily property, it's based on it being on a lease. I don't know whether that's true or not, but I do know that we need more housing, it's a prime location for additional housing. We have another brand-new project within two blocks on one hundred and fifty-third, which was approved for that very same purpose of providing additional housing for people in the city of Lawndale. I am extremely opposed to this, and I signed the petition, and there weren't no lies on the petition. That is a lie to say that there were lies on the petition. The one I signed had no lies on it. So not only do I appear as a person, as an individual, I appear for the same said committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to, we're going to ask if the, the audience, if you can, can hold your expressions of, of applauses or boos, hisses, anything of that nature, so that we can be fair to both the applicant as well as those opposed to the, the project. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. Good evening, councilmen. Welcome back, Mr. Moore. You were much, much missed, much missed in the city. First, we want to start, your Honorable Mayor and council, is to say that the...
Can we have your name?
Alex, Alex Arash. That the city council appointed planning commission, and planning commission voted unanimously against this project five-oh. I mean, there's a reason why you guys assigned the body for this body to be able to study projects, overview projects, and they unanimously voted five-oh. So now they're coming to appeal this project, and what are they doing? They're offering the city money. So is this is some sort, now we're, the city's coming off to say that we're doing that, that real estate is going to be in a, in the city of Lawndale, that zoning is for sale. So why don't we just do any project that doesn't fit in, let's just come up with a large sum of money, and then we'll get the project approved since it's not going to generate the amount of revenue that it should. In addition, to say that a family member has held this property for sixty, seventy years, that's their prerogative. They're trying to strong-arm the city to keep this project empty for as long as they want. They have the right, put it up for sale, someone will buy it immediately. So they don't want to develop it, so that means that they have to force the city to do a project that they don't want. In addition, they want it to ground lease. They don't want to hold it on their property in the, for generations to come, which is a great thing to do, but there's a consequence for that, and that's, that shouldn't be done at the community's expense. And in addition to their economic study report, if we look at this, what the city, the peer review, their report even comes back to show that this is the least profitable piece of project for the city, and we need nothing more than housing. But if, yes, what the, what the... But if, yes, what the, what the gentleman said about, yes, market-driven is, development's market-driven, but it has to be welcomed. If they want to sell this property or to ground lease at high income above the market average, of course, they're not going to be able to lease it. It's what's, what's fair market value. And the property owner is just being very tough and wants, for lack of better words, is greedy, wants to wait on for something bigger. It's empty for six years. If people, if, if you're renting your house for apartment and it's not market value, you give them a free month. You drop, you, you, you drop in the moving rate. You give security deposits less, but they want to hold on to something big, so they say, hey, all these tenants came by. If you come with any major tenant, give them a great ground lease, they'll be more than happy to do it. And if we're going to keep putting up more and more car wash in the city of Longdale, what do we do? Why don't we just put up liquor stores every other corner? We don't need another car wash. There's so many. This is not a, it's not a lifestyle, it's not a restaurant, it's not a coffee shop, it's another service that's not needed. And I'm one of the petitioners that signed to it, and I want to say the petitioners did come side-by-side. This was not a petition that I signed at the grocery store. They actually came to the property, and I actually put my signature on it, and we could verify those signatures. That's another thing I did before I signed it. And the most important thing is, development's not for sale, and please, don't give your authority of, of council away just on this land use agreement of development.
Thank you, sir.
Rental Abram. I've been following this, I've been to all the meetings except the planning commission. I do agree with the comments that the car wash is not the ideal business for this location. Maybe a mixed-use complex or hotel would be ideal. The problem is you can't force these people to sell that property. So my concern, and one of the things that stuck me in the staff report, now I don't know how many of the people here read it, the staff report, one of the conclusions states that with the developer's willingness to cover the gaps in revenue loss, along with the difficulty on site development, which we've heard tonight, it concludes that as to the site alone, the project is in compliance with the general plan. Now, with my, with that comment, my concern is that if this project is denied, after the developers met all the city's requirements, including paying for gaps, you're going to end up with layers of costly litigation with the site remaining in isolation with no revenue generated. And we've already got an empty site at the corner of Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Hawthorne. There was some mention of the 40-foot units. Those have been in development and vacant for several years now. So realistically, what's going to happen if this project is denied, the developer, the owner is going to go back and say, well, let me find something else. It's going to be another seven years empty. And what does another empty lot say to any developer that wants to do business in Longdale? So one of the recommendations is to allow a review, is, is to direct the applicant to revise a project for reconsideration. This would allow a review of any environmental concerns, including a view of noise and traffic studies, and to negotiate a development deal with the applicant. I mean, the, the city, the council's got a tough decision tonight, and either way, it's, it's going to be difficult. But I think if you like, if you deny it, that's how it's going to be made vacant for at least another seven years. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, good afternoon. This is my first time speaking in public, so bear with me. Well, I'm here on behalf of representing the, the community that's against this project. I mean, I wouldn't mind, but like, we've got a point, since people always look for jobs and, you know, those type of, that type of work. I don't know, we, I don't, I'm trying to, I'm not trying to advise anybody, but maybe it should be something else that would employ people that would...
Go ahead and address, address the council front, if you don't mind.
Yeah, we'll make more money for the community, because I know the workers that are going to work, if they will, they'll be the same workers in the community to work there, right? And as, you know, you say, like, in the title says, a partnership, you know, you, you want to contribute, I mean, you want the people to contribute to the, to the same city to, like, uplift it, like you said earlier, to bring it up into a higher level, right? I mean, we know that the city is, is not that big, it doesn't have that much territory in, in this, I know the word, that's bodies that were, they're trying to build is, is not really a, a quite, I mean, I mean, it didn't need to be done right, but like, it's not, we, we already got enough car washes there, like over here in Roskins, and, you know, people could easily wash their cars at their, at their house, you know? And, oh, my, I think my, my point of views is with them too, because it does build a more, more job leverage, you know, for, for, for like, the, for the, mostly for people that are really looking for, to, um, build up, to, to build up their families and, you know, to get a, to lower, to, to lower the crime rate in the, in the community, and not just the community, I think it'll be more beneficial to, to the city, to, I mean, there's a lot to it, but, I mean, I didn't construct my, my paper, but there's a lot to it that we could discuss about, you know? But that's it for me.
Give us, give us your name before you...
Oh, my name is Saul. Saul Korea.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Are you, are you with the applicant, or are you the public comment?
I'm with public comment, please.
Okay.
So, good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. My name is Douglas Carstens. I'm an attorney with Chatten Brown Carstens &amp; Minter, and I'm here on behalf of the Longdale Community Association. It's an ad hoc association, was formed specifically in response to this car wash proposal, and we're asking you to deny the project. There were petitions submitted by over a thousand people, thousand residents, door-to-door collected, and these are people in abutting areas, people who put their addresses on the petition, and they show they're not leaving, living east of Carson, I mean, sorry, east of Hawthorne. The addresses are on there. We've submitted letters. We submitted letters on December 1st, on January 11th detailing our objections to this project. In short, we support the planning commission, which recommended and voted to deny approval of this project, and it in turn rested on some very detailed and careful work by city staff recommending denial of the project. The project is not consistent with the general plan. That's laid out in the planning commission resolution that's in your package tonight, Policies 6G and Goal 7, to protect housing opportunities for affordable housing and contribute positively to the city. This project is not consistent with those. Even if the project were to be further reviewed for possible approval, it must undergo review in an environmental impact report or an EIR pursuant to the California Environmental Equality Act, or CEQA. CEQA is a Bill of Rights for participatory environmental democracy. It helps people understand the project and its impacts, and how it's going to affect them and how it can be mitigated. This project is not exempt from CEQA because it's not consistent with the general plan, and it's likely to have significant noise and traffic impacts. There are people here tonight who'll talk about that. It requires further analysis, as we've detailed in our letters. With respect to noise, residents of the apartment buildings to the south especially will be hit with noise from vacuum cleaners and blowers and cars on the property. People know how loud car washes are. There are technical defects in the noise analysis, which we've detailed in our letters. And with respect to traffic, you know, a queuing analysis was done, but it did not deal with the entry and exit to Hawthorne Boulevard. The Sheriff's Department in a July 7, 2020 letter, that's also in your staff report, recommended the driveway be exit-only, and that the driveway on the southwest be increased in size to 12 feet to reduce the likelihood of collisions. These are the types of impacts that must be analyzed in a properly-done environmental review. There's also an economic analysis that the Will Dan, Will Dan, the economic or economist, they, they show this is not the best use of the site, and it's not an overall positive. It has opportunity costs. It's not just a matter of looking at this specific project. So we ask that you deny approval of this project this evening, and I stand ready to answer any questions. I really thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, my name is Jim Steedman, and I'm with the company Navcon Engineering out of Fullerton, California. We're a noise and vibration consulting firm, so we provide noise and vibration consulting services. We distribute software for noise analysis, noise modeling. We train approximately 100, 110 acoustical and vibration engineers every year, and we support approximately 400 acoustical engineers and planners throughout North America. And I came here to speak to the MB Acoustics report, and we were retained by CB, CM, Doug Carstens, who just spoke with you. And we submitted a report to Doug with our findings, our peer review findings on that. He submitted that to you in December of last year, and I can confirm that his summary is exactly what we had written to him. There's a couple of things I would like to point out, and you probably have already read the, his, his letter to you. But I had had some discussions with Rafael Garcia and Sean Moore about what the noise limit should be for this project, or for any project, and I think that MB Acoustics missed that. And I would just point that out in the letter that Doug sent to you. And I think the important concept is here is that the noise limits for the city should be based upon the normally acceptable range, but they have to be below the conditionally acceptable threshold, and this accounts for about 5 dB reduction in the limits. The second thing that we looked at was the ambient noise survey that was conducted by MB Acoustics, and we also saw some issues with that, which Doug pointed out in the, in his letter to you. But I think last and most importantly are the inconsistencies in the noise model. And we've done a number of car wash noise assessments ourself, and we know that the three principal noise sources would be the blower noise and the mechanical noise coming out of the tunnel, and then the vacuum system noise, and that would include the noise coming out of the nozzles, and also the noise coming from the central vacuum system, and finally the traffic, which is the noise generated by traffic on the site. And according to the drawings that we saw, I think the queuing area will hold 30 cars. There are 34 stalls within the property, and there's also room for other cars to travel around the property. And in the MB Acoustics report, they did not even address the traffic noise, and that's a huge issue because these cars, in loud situations, it's only several feet.
Your time has expired, sir.
Okay, okay. Thank you, sir.
Can I just say one more thing here? What, what line that they had in the MB Acoustics report, it says, when comparing the change in noise levels to official characteristics, how far do we think it could be? The noise level increase would not be acceptable, and we totally disagree with that.
Thank you for your time. If you have any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, may I make a suggestion? Can we ask that if any conversations in the audience need to take place, that they step outside, because it's very distracting.
Okay, yeah, that's a good idea. Just to remind you, if, if those of you who would like to have a conversation, if we ask that you would step out into the lobby, so as to not distract the proceedings. Thank you kindly. Yes, Mayor?
Hi, my name is Monica, and I'm from the community. I've been living here about eight years already, and just wanted to say that building this in our community, it's not appropriate, meaning it's not going to create a lot of jobs for our community, even for young kids. If the owner really wanted to help the city, he would sell it or build himself something. Meaning, he could do a franchise of McDonald's or Subway or something like that, where it creates more revenue for the city. Also, it creates more jobs. He could also create a, like, residential area, meaning, like they did in Carson, like they did in Zambidro, meaning they have little stores at the bottom, and then upstairs, they did, like, apartments and stuff like that, for the elderly, for the young, and students, excuse me, stuff like that. This right here, it's just, creates noise, creates vandalism. Reason is, is because homeless, we have an issue with homeless as well. We have an issue with loud noises. There's apartment buildings next to it, where you go on Hawthorne, it's going to be very busy street, traffic jams are going to be, if you're trying to get in or out, it's going to create traffic jams, period. I'm sorry to say this, but they're talking about the most beautiful car wash and stuff like that. Personally, and not that I'm against it, but personally, I don't see nothing beautiful about it, and I'm totally honest about that. Water, we're in a drought. We have three car washes already in the city. We don't need another one. They're talking about making revenue and stuff like that, so that means they're taking away from the other car washes to come to theirs. You see what I'm saying? So it's like, it doesn't make sense. Okay, well, that's all I would just want to say. I'm kind of nervous right now because I'm upset.
Thank, thank you for your comments. Yes, Mayor?
Hi.
Hello.
Hi, my name's Lisa. I've been living in the area about 13 years, and I just want, she said everything I was going to say, so I just want to say that we don't need another car wash, and some type of housing, I believe, would be good, and that's all I want to say.
Thank you. Thanks for those comments. Good evening.
But I also like to say that to the people here, that please, to the mayor, and to all the congressmen, whoever are here, that please give us the Spanish people at least five minutes to speak our own language. I'm sure that many of you speak Spanish, and would like to hear something in Spanish, at least five minutes. That is my main concern beside the car wash, but please give at least five minutes to speak Spanish. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Yes, Mayor?
Hello, good evening. My name's Susanna Gutierrez. I just wanted to say that I'm against the structure of the car wash. Everything that they stated, I have nothing different to say about it.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Suzanne, Suzanne, right?
Suzanne.
Okay, Susanna, okay, Susanna. Thank you, Susanna. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello, my name's Angelica. I'm also here to oppose to the car wash. Why don't, why can't we have something else? There's not a lot of loungers here in, in Longdale. Why can't we have either a laundry room, small shopping center, or a 99 cent store? All the people we complaining that we don't have a 99 cent store, that it was one here, they took it off, that we need something else. A lot of people here that don't, are not able to support buying grocery stores, their groceries, so we go to 99 cent store. There's some around here, but not in our neighborhood. I wish that you guys take a look at that and see if you guys can allow one of the 99 cents to come to the, to the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Veronica, and unfortunately, I don't live in Beverly Hills. I live on 156 and Hutton Boulevard.
A lot of people here that don't, are not able to support buying grocery stores their groceries. So we go to night instance store. There's some around here, but not in our neighborhood. I wish that you guys take a look at that and see if you guys can allow one of the night instances to come to the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Veronica. And fortunately, I don't live in Beverly Hills, I live on 156 and Hutton Boulevard. So the car wash is beautiful, but it's going to bring noise for us, trash. Maybe the chemicals will give us cancer. We don't know, right? I'm against the car wash. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes. Have it to come forth, and then we'll translate. I'm going to ask, yeah, you'll translate for me, yes.
I would just ask the clerk, given that we're going to need to do word-for-word translations, so this will be six minutes instead of three, because each thing that she says will then be repeated completely. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, I don't have a tip of a word. Bienvenidos.
Buenas noches, soy Marta Arias. Soy la manager del siguiente departamento que estás junto a donde quieren hacer el car wash.
Good evening, my name is.
Marta Arias.
Marta Arias. And I'm the manager for the apartment complex that's right next to the car wash.
Okay. El motivo que estoy aquí es porque ahí hay muchos ancianos, personas que están descansando que no necesitan oír mucho ruido.
The reason why I'm here is because there's a lot of elderly people that live in those apartments and they're resting and they don't want to hear a lot of noise.
Este es el motivo que no queremos que pongan el car wash allí porque son personas bastante avanzadas de edad y necesitamos que ellos estén bien.
That's one of the reasons why we don't want the car wash, because there's a lot of elderly and we want them to be comfortable and they're, they're okay and they don't hear a lot of noise.
Son 54 apartamentos.
It's 54 apartments.
Y también hay babies chiquititos.
And there's a lot of little babies as well.
El problema va a ser de que hay mucho ruido, mucho ruido que hace esas máquinas y las personas no van a sentirse bien.
The problem is that it's going to be too noisy and people are not going to be feeling okay and they're going to be making them uncomfortable. Thank you, that was all my comments.
Gracias.
Gracias por hablando. Okay, let's have another speaker. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Leia and I'm a resident in the area. And I just want to oppose the project because we don't need any other car washes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any others wishing to speak? Okay, okay, with that, we will close public comments on this matter. And also, that I'm going to close the public hearing, it's 7:55, I'm going to close the public hearing. The public hearing is hereby closed. I want to thank those who provided comments and the applicants for providing comments. We'll bring it up to the diocese for any discussions, if they have any questions of the applicant or any of those who provide comments.
I'd like to ask a question, if I may.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
To the city attorney. Because there's been a lot of comments, and I do want to say thank you to everybody that came out and spoke. I do want to ask a question to the city attorney, because it's been posed a lot. Does the, and I know the answer, but I just want to make sure, is there a restriction on the amount of car washes that the city has currently at this time? Or maybe staff can also jump in?
At this time, I do not believe that the city has a limit on the number of car washes that are allowed. Mr. Moore, would you concur with that, sir?
That is correct. There isn't a limitation on the number of car washes.
Do we need to translate the comments back?
Should we translate that portion back in Spanish, since there's several?
Which portion?
That there is no ordinance on the limit of car washes.
Yeah, let's have staff translate. Ms. Chavez, translate.
Voy a traducir de lo que está diciendo Councilwoman Bernadette, de que no hay un límite de cuántos car wash puede haber en la ciudad de Londres.
And then I'm going to go into, the reason why I asked that is because, and I think our resident Randall Abrams touched upon a few points that as we're making this decision, we have to go based off of what the code states. If it currently, and I know a lot of people brought up, and trust me too, you know, there is, it's difficult when you do have too many of one place of business. However, I just want to touch on is we cannot limit on the basis of there being too many car washes. You know, it's, it's just something that it's, you know, if we had a limit to it, then it's something you can deny it based off of. So I want to kind of bring it to what we actually are voting in this meeting. This meeting specifically is whether or not to grant a special use permit. And so, you know, it's a very, very difficult decision. And I get it, you know. However, it's one of those things where when an applicant submits an application, you have to look and see if they fulfilled all the requirements. And based off of what I'm seeing in our code, I honestly don't see that it violates any of those. You know, there was brought up the RENA numbers and how the planning commission voted. And they opposed it on the basis of, of it having our RENA numbers that we need to, basically the amount of housing that the state is asking us to build currently, and we voted on it at our last meeting. There, our last RENA numbers, I think, were 340 for the years, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, 2014 to 2021, we were required to build 340 units. Out of those units that were actually built, it was around 70. And none of them were low income. So I kind of have a hard time, for me, justifying denying a project because in prior years, you know, we didn't actually meet those qualifications. So, you know, it's, it's a very tough decision. And the way I'm looking at it is if we have certain codes, we write those codes so that there's no bias when we're making these decisions. In this case, if the applicant met all of the qualifications, and based off of the staff report I'm seeing it, I have a really hard time justifying a denial on the project based off of that. And I get it, you know, we've been faced with appeals before. Recently, it was a few years back, 41 units. And we did get a lot of people that were upset. They came and they said, look at the traffic congestion it's going to cause. Look at all of these elements that it's really going to affect our way of living. In the end, we decided we're going to look at what the code allows for, and that's how we're going to base our vote. And we had to allow it. One of the other things that I look at the reports, and in my personal life, I work in residential real estate, so I do have a little bit of an understanding of how the market works. And I think there, there might be this idea that the city can dictate what we put in there, such as a restaurant or, you know, retail. However, it isn't something that the city can dictate. It's pretty much up to whoever owns the land. They do have to follow, sorry. They do have to follow our code. However, it's, it's not something where we can say, you know what, we want this restaurant in there, can you please put that in there? It has to be something that whoever owns the land decides. This lot has been vacant for quite a number of years. We have another lot. And I'm trying to look at this as how historically what has happened in our city. We have a lot on Manhattan Beach Boulevard that has been vacant for almost 20 years. I think over 20 years. And it's one of those things where we, we wanted to see retail. We did, we wanted to see retail restaurants, mixed use. We wanted it to be a center for people to gather, to enjoy. And it, it's been many, many years and we haven't gotten any progress on that lot. And so, those are the feelings that I'm having as I'm looking at the situation that we're currently in. And I have to go with what the code says currently. That isn't to say in the future, you know, we can look at our zoning, which we're currently doing with our Hawthorne Boulevard plan. We're looking at what do residents want to see. However, as it's currently in the code, I can't help but feel that there is not a good enough basis to deny the project. So I just wanted to make sure to explain where I'm coming from and how I'm looking at it. Because we have to make sure that however we're voting, it sets a precedent for future business, people that want to come into the city and build and develop. And I think that if we start deviating from what the, from how we're reading the code and arbitrarily coming up with decisions not to allow certain uses, it starts setting a dangerous precedence for how other potential developers are looking at developing. And so I just wanted to make sure, you know, I do really get the feelings that are out there, trust me. You know, if this was based off of other criteria, you know, it would probably be a different situation. But we have to go based off of what the code allows for. And for me, I don't see a reason why we could deny the project based off of what the code allows.
Thank you for those comments, Councilwoman Suarez. Is there any others want to make any, any comments? Councilwoman Quavis?
I do agree with Bernadette on, based on the code, we will, you know, we could accept the project. I do, I would like to see them work with the building behind them if we were to accept the project in creating a barrier so that the elderly and the babies could sleep. Noise walls, I don't know what could be done. But I also review all the documentation and based on what has been provided to us and the code, they qualified for the project. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman Quavis. Anyone else want to add anything? I do have a couple of questions. We can come back if someone wants to jump in. This is directed to the staff, just so that, just so that I'm clear. We understand that this project does not provide for any housing opportunities, as some would, would like to see. And of course, we have our RENA numbers we have to be concerned about. Can you describe to us, I know we have the RENA's numbers, and what is the obligations? I know we have an inventory, like, so you, so you take inventory of possible sites that possibly can provide housing. So what is the obligation of, of the city once, for instance, a parcel is identified as possibly being able to provide housing? If we take that property off the market per se, because we approved another project, what position, this might be for the city attorney as well, what position does that put the city in in terms of RENA number? Would we have ran the file of state law if we did such, knowing that obviously you have to balance property rights? I don't know, which one you want to take that?
Sure, yes, sir. Great question. There is under state law now what is called the no net loss law, which means that if you do take units off the market, to use your term, sir, you have to find one or more sites in the city to then absorb those units. So as part of the process, you would make the findings, approve this project, and then staff would be bringing back to you at some point in the very near future, a tweak to the housing element to show where those site, those units would be absorbed into other parts of the city. Obviously, not the units themselves, but the opportunity to build those units would be absorbed into other parts of the city. Mr. Moore or Ms. Chavez, anything to add to that?
Yeah, I'll echo the same what Greg has just brought up, the city attorney. There is a no net, not loss clause. The state, Greg and I were just talking about this in my previous jurisdiction. HCD is pushing back hard on housing. They're thoroughly going through each housing element. They're kicking back a majority of them. And, and they're also enforcing now on the housing elements, ensuring that cities meet all their goals and the expectations outlined in those housing elements. And don't forget, the previous housing, I don't know what was the outcomes, it's my first day back. But it was identified, I recall, in the previous housing element. And they're still holding our feet to the fire, HCD, Housing and Community Development, and ensuring that we follow through on our RENA numbers. So, previous, and our previous RENA numbers, I think they're 390. And our new ones are 29 something, 2900.
As a follow-up, so what happens if you, I appreciate the zero, zero net. So what happens if you approve the project and then you revisit the, the rest of the inventory to see if they, basically, you look to the rest of the inventory for them to absorb the hypothetical housing that could be built on this site? What happens if the rest of the inventory cannot sustain that hypothetical number that would be built on this, especially seeing that the project would already be approved? You can't go back and unapprove it because the, the rest of the inventory can't absorb the hypothetical housing.
Sure. What they wind up doing is, is they, they essentially force you to upzone land somewhere in the city. So let's say you have land that currently would be zoned for single-family or duplexes. They would force you to allow, say, triplexes or fourplexes there to then take on those additional units. And so you'd have to find, again, let's say you, you allow by right duplexes, and let's say we lost 40 units. We'd have to go find 20 sites that we would allow fourplexes by right, because that would be 20 times two, 40 units, that we would be adding into the inventory. Now, whether those were actually built or not, didn't, used to be important under the RENA laws, but we all know the housing laws are changing. But that's how the state would act with us, sir. They, they would, they would force us to go find a way to get those units into the potential inventory somewhere in the city.
So to put it plainly, if, if we take this off the inventory list, other sites would have to absorb that list, which could result in a single-family home or single-family residents turning into a fourplex, higher density in a single-family.
Whatever higher density you as a city approve, staff will bring it to you, but, but yes. I use that as an example, but yes, sir.
But somehow, because that, that 40 units, if it was 40 units hypothetical for this site, those units don't go away because we, because we approved the project and took it off the market. It has to go somewhere and possibly could go into residential.
Correct.
To upzone, let's say, R2 to allow for a fourplex or whatever you happen to be. So you can potentially have two units, a unit that's next to you, single-family home. The next day after we approve this, you have a fourplex there. Not the next day, but you get the idea, does that have the idea?
But, but absolutely correct, sir, yes. And, and what you said was so key. Those units don't disappear from what Lawndale has to allow to be built. So we just have to find somewhere different to allow it. And your point's exactly right. It could be on a block that's mostly single-family homes right now. And that's the only place that we can find to put the units that have come off the market. That is correct, sir.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question regarding that also?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I would like to know how many units we're talking about? And also, what happens if, let's say, it's 40 units and we deny this project, and the lot stays empty for 10 years? We can make the landowner build units there? So are, how do we present that to the state? Or are we penalized if we don't build there?
Sure. The, the applicant's attorney actually sort of touched on this. If the lot stays unbuilt for enough periods of time, and, and the way the state measures it, it would be great for our purposes as regular humans if we measured it in five years or 10 years. They measure it in RENA cycles. So if it stays unbuilt for the statutory number of RENA cycles, we can no longer use it as a potential site. We have to go find those units someplace else. We discount this site, say it simply won't be built, and we have to go look somewhere else. And that's, that's a fairly, they've always done this, but they're, as Mr. Moore said, cracking down much harder on it, and the laws have been. as Mr. Moore said, cracking down much harder on it, and the laws have been strengthened. Um, a, a housing advocate would say they've been strengthened. We'd say they're intruding more on us, but the laws have gone that direction. Thank you, ma'am.
And just to, to add to that, um, it'll be a hundred and fifty units an acre within the Hawthorne plan. So depending on the size of the lot, um, they would be able to build up to a hundred and fifty units an acre.
That sounds like a lot. Okay, um, let's see if I have another question real quick. Madam Community Development Director, can you speak to the issue on page, um, seven of sixteen of the report where it talks about that the, the current proposal provides no tangible benefits to the community or surrounding residents while lacking compatibility to the surrounding land use? And it speaks to the consistency of the, the land use element. This is, uh, let's see, it's page seven. Yeah, of the report, yeah, that would be the, of the report, yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, what page was that?
Uh, page seven.
Seven.
It's under the consistency with the general, general plan.
Ms. Chavez, that's the October fourth report?
Okay.
The, the original that we brought in.
Yeah, it's under the, um, consistency with the general plan, land use element.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a copy of that section. Could you give me one minute, please?
Okay, no problem. I can give you this, you want, you want to just, see this copy? Yeah, just, just take this real quick. Yeah, yeah, speak to this. Compatibility or whether or not it's compatible with the land use? You can take that with you if you want to. I just wanted to get a little more clarity on, on the requirements to, um, for it to be compatible with the land use. And whether or not, what's the, um, the opinion of, of staff? And of course, the applicant will have a time to, to rebut those as well. Yeah. Okay, so go ahead and take your time on that. Madam Pro Tim, Hoffmann-Gormer will make some comments. And anyone else who want to make a comment? Yes, ma'am.
I have some thoughts on the issue as well, on this car wash. And this has not been something easy that any of us have dealt with. That being said, some of my concerns are even still different than any of them that are mentioned tonight. The first one, in that quadrant of Lawndale, we have just built a condominium that as far as I'm concerned has inadequate parking, putting more strain on that quadrant. The second thing is, this new car wash will be just around the corner to another car wash. I live in Lawndale too, and I'm just as lazy as the next person. And when I go over to one car wash and see that the line's too long, I'm going to zip through the neighborhood, just like all the rest of you are, to go to the other car wash. I don't think the neighbors in that quadrant are deserving of me trying to cut through the neighborhood. So that I have a problem with. Another thing that I have a problem with that I haven't heard anybody mention is Lawndale, we're sitting here with, we're still over a year out from Metro telling us if they're cutting through Hawthorne Boulevard on the south side of the four oh five. We don't have an answer for that. Where is the premier spot in Lawndale to showcase our city? Right now, it's on the north side of the four oh five freeway. So that has to be considered as well. Along with the fact that this would be the sixth, not the third, the sixth car wash in the city. I'm not saying that anything about the owners of this car wash. Tim, you're absolutely wonderful. If I wanted a car wash, trust me, you would have it. You have done your work. This petition that they are talking about, I saw the petition. Both sides failed. If I was a school teacher, both sides failed. One of them didn't give me the ones that were for the, the car wash. They weren't Lawndale residents. The people that were against the car wash, I couldn't read your names. There was no signature or, I couldn't hold it up to a voter registration card. I, there were inadequate addresses. I'd have a street on one, but not a house number. I'd have a house number and not a street number. I couldn't read the person's name. I don't know who I'm looking at or looking for. Yes, there might have been a thousand signatures, but it was poorly done. I had to go out and do it myself. And so I had to go to the people in Lawndale that I have known. And unfortunately, that answer was the same thing that everybody has got a question about. And that is, this car wash, if built, is going to last fifty to a hundred years on that property. The Giles family has been here around seventy years, and I understand it. And my heart breaks for you Giles family because Hoffmann's have been around here that long too. And I don't want to be told what to put on my property. And I don't think that we need to dictate to you what you put on that property. Okay? But it's Hawthorne Boulevard, premium location, isn't going to be disturbed by Metro. And it's the sixth car wash. And the petitions were both poor. And what I heard from the residents of Lawndale, when I called them and went to their homes, they don't want to see a car wash, another one on our boulevard. Few years ago, we were inundated, every single corner had a medical office or a dental office. Remember that? And everybody went, my goodness! And they don't produce anything either for us. We're doing it again. Like the car lots, we've got to figure out what needs to be out on our boulevard and work with the Giles family, but I don't believe it's the car wash.
Could use your remarks now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, uh, Madam Pro Tim. Let me, uh, if you, are you ready to answer?
Yes.
I did find a section that kind of speaks to that, but, but go ahead.
Um, Mr. Mayor, uh, this talks about, um, non-tangible benefits, which means that they don't have something that they can actually purchase. So it's mostly a service, which means that the tax revenue is going to be really small compared to an actual, um, item or product that you can purchase.
Okay, okay, thank you for that clarification. I do want to ask the city, city attorney, and I'll swing to anyone else who want to ask a question. I do want to ask the city attorney for, for clarifications on, um, I, I appreciate that this project, at least on its face, seemed to meet all the, the elements. But I want to ask the city attorney, because I've always been under the impression that if I didn't have discretion or authority, then why is it before me? Um, that has always been when I'm in public service, or if I'm, even if it's not my call, if it's someone else's call in, in a, a public agency. If you don't have discretion or it's not under your authority, why am I before you? So I will ask the same question here. If it's not, if I don't have any type of discretion or there's nothing under my authority to do, then to me it would be a ministerial function. So I just want to ask the city attorney, uh, what is our, I mean, in, in this case, whether you believe that it has met all the requirements of the municipal code or what is our legal authority? Are we, do we have some discretion here? Or exactly what, what is the, what is our authority? You always want to know what's the authority of, of, I don't know why I'm, why I'm looking at this. I don't need to see that.
Yes, sir. No, very good, Mr. Mayor. Whenever the city council or your planning commission is asked to approve a permit, be it a conditional use permit, or in this case, a special use permit, in order to, in order to approve the permit, you have to make certain findings. One of the findings, and in fact, the one that the planning commission determined it could not make, was consistency with the general plan. Planning commission could make the finding that this was consistent with the zoning code. Planning commission could make some other findings. They determined that they could not make the finding that this project was consistent with the general plan because they had concerns about, uh, the housing element of the general plan. If you share those concerns, then you may not be able to make that finding. If you don't share those concerns, if the discussion tonight leads you to believe that those concerns can be met, then you would say, I could make that finding. In addition, uh, the previous city manager had brought to your attention, and, and Mr. Moore first actually was the, the first to bring this up, uh, in the first hearing on this matter, and, and the applicant's attorney discussed it to some extent as well that night. There's an economic element in Lawndale's general plan. And so to be consistent with the general plan, uh, you would need to find that this project is, is consistent with that economic element. That's why we went through, uh, the process of, of having a study done, why, why the applicant then provided its own evidence, um, with a study. If you believe, and, and I just want to sort of clarify, uh, a, a little bit of, of what one of the members of the public said, um, on, on page three of, of the staff report, we, we do say that, we're not saying that the project is in compliance with the general plan. What, what we're saying is that the way that you all, each of you, with your own vote, interprets the economic study, you have the ability to find that the project is in compliance or is not in compliance. And it really comes down to whether you're taking a broader view about the project's impacts, not just on its own site, but on the sites nearby, or whether you're taking a narrow view of the project's impacts on that site and what, what can be done with that site. You as the decision makers have that, uh, authority. It's not my authority, and it's not staff's, which is a, a major reason why we've brought to you options for tonight, rather than bringing you, um, our best guess at what you might find. So to your exact point, Mr. Mayor, you do have discretion tonight. And, and I think focusing on those two elements of the general plan, uh, does this meet the housing element? Does this meet the economic element? Kind of will help guide us, uh, it, it guides your vote for each of the five of you individually. And then depending on which way you go, it guides us in crafting, um, a, a resolution that will memorialize your vote. And, and I, I'm being very honest, um, more honest than I normally am, when I say that I agree with many members of the public and with all of you who have said, this is a hard one. This is a close case. Um, this is not, not a slam dunk that could just sit at planning commission and be done. This is a perfectly fine one for you as the elected officials to weigh in on. And, and you're gonna, in determining whether you can make that finding or not, you're going to be making some high-level policy decisions. So we're happy to help, but ultimately it's up to the five of you. Thank you, sir, very much.
Thank, thank you, uh, for being overly honest. Uh, let me, um, I'm going to read this little, um, section that was, this was actually the planning commission, uh, came out of the planning commission. Then I'll swing it to someone else who want to make any comments. And it speaks to my question about the compatibility or inconformity with the, um, general plan. It reads that staff review further indicates that the proposed project is not consistent with the general plan because the proposed project does not help to achieve the overall intent of the land use and housing element. The purpose of the goals and policies identified is to provide the adequate housing that meets the existing and future needs of the community. Developing the site with a car wash development would be inconsistent with the general plan because it would remove sites specifically identified as part of the housing elements inventory of suitable and adopted housing to meet the existing and future needs of the community. In addition, um, issues relevant to the general plan's economic element arose from the city council here on October fourth. In response to the comments from the applicant's representative, staff raised issues about whether the project could comply with the economic elements required that commercial projects be revenue positive for the city. Then it goes on just to say, at this time, based on the lack of sales tax arising, arising from a car wash operation, it does not appear that this requirement could be met. So basically, they're saying that it's inconsistent with the land use, um, land use and housing elements of it. And I haven't seen so far any thing that really, um, in my mind, re- rebuts what the, the staff had concluded, um, here, but I could be wrong. Let's have some additional comments.
I do have some additional comments because I think what I want to stress most importantly is there are concerns about having too many of one type of business. However, I don't think it's fair to have an applicant go through a process when at the beginning we could have simply had the codes, codes state no more than so many of this type of business. The other thing I want to bring up is there's been a lot of talk of highest and best use. And to me, a vacant lot sitting there for ten, twenty years, attracting crime, attracting, um, some types of illicit activity, I don't see that that's the highest and best use for us to wait out and see. I, I could be wrong. I really wish, you know, we could get a beautiful mixed-use development. However, based off of what I've been seeing, based off our Manhattan Beach lot, based off this lot and how long it sat there, and I do agree, the property owner has every right to, within whatever the code allows, allow whatever he wants. And I guess that's part of my concern too, is if we were to vote, or if this council were to make a decision to vote no, and it sits there, imagine if it generated fifty thousand a year, let's say. Multiply that times ten, that's half a million that nobody gets, that the property owner has to upkeep with maintenance. I have a residential building next to me, and the units are still being built. And I get so many complaints from the neighbors about people using drugs, people drinking on the premise, breaking in, so many break-ins into that unit. And I think that the longer that this building stays in not being used, it's attracting more and more crime. And that's part of my concern too, as I look at this decision and how to make. That's also what I'm keeping in mind as well. And I, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Yes, yes, ma'am.
That lot has been empty for many years already. There's already a loss of revenue there. If it remains empty, we're, we're continuing to lose revenue, whether it's like Bernadette said, fifty thousand, twenty-five thousand. It's something that's coming into the city. I do hear our citizens that, about the noise and about traffic. But if, we should be able to work with the property owners and the car wash, uh, family to make it better for our neighbors. Yes, we do have other car washes, six other car washes in Lawndale. But once again, there is no code that says we can't have ten car washes. The same with the dental offices. We probably have twenty until we decided, okay, there's a limit now. We're not going to allow it anymore. If we don't want, if we did not want any other car washes, we should have put a code that said no more than six car washes. I still don't see, I do see that it's going to be a housing element, um, issue, but I think if we're talking about twenty units, um, there are other properties on Hawthorne that could be used for the housing.
I just would add, I mean, I, I appreciate, um, the, the fact that you point out there that there's nothing in the municipal code. that there's nothing in the municipal code that limits us to a certain amount. But the issue for me is whether or not it conforms with the general plan. So, which the municipal code is how to get to the general plan, really. So, the general plan is really the vision of the community, the vision of the city. The code is simply how to get there and what happens if someone violates us getting there. That's really what the code is for, as opposed to the code being before the general plan. That's why you have to have, a project have to be consistent more so with the general plan. Yeah, I do agree that, yeah, you can take a look at different issues and decide whether or not you wanna put a cap on it, similar to what we did a few years ago. We did put a cap on used car lots. And we also did for dental, medical use on the first floor, right? But that was after we identified that there was a proliferation of. And to stop the proliferation of, because there was no economic benefit for the city to continue to have, and certainly, I won't speak necessarily to used car lots because they, you know, they have frozen cons as well. But certainly, for medical uses on the first floor, there was actually start to be a detriment to the community because when you have medical facilities on the first floor, you move opportunities for retail and sales opportunities. So, you generally look at those issues when you realize that, wait a minute, we got 100 medical facilities on the Boulevard. So, it's not uncommon to be at a place to where you have an applicant come, and you, of course, give the applicant his or her due process, but at the same time, you ask yourself, "Do, are we there yet? Or have we already passed that point?" And one applicant can be inconsistent with, let's say you got 100 uses of something. I'm just making up an outrageous number. 99 could have been incompatible, but at some point, you could reach the point to where it's no longer compatible with the general plan, especially if the general plan changed, right? Because the general plan may change, but not necessarily the code. So, the code may not prevent it, but the general plan may. And so, if the general plan has changed, guess what? That 100 use applicant is no longer consistent with the general plan. So, yes, you can do a moratorium on them and then change the municipal codes or what have you. But at the end of the day, that general plan would really run today. So, to say that you have the 99, yeah, that was fine, but at some point, you would get inconsistent if the general plan had changed. In this case, our general plan, you know, our general plan changes. Our housing elements changes. And so, all the projects have to be consistent with that. Now, yes, the owner has the right, they do have their right to their property. They have certain property rights. The city also have what is called the police powers. These police powers allow us to regulate land use so that we can make decisions in the best interest of the public. And so, I'm all for property rights. You know, I get it. I'm a good old boy from Oklahoma, right? And it's all about property rights, right? I get that, but at the same time, it has to be tempered or balanced with what's best for the community as a whole. And that's what this body is made up to make those decisions, knowing that we do have to honor property rights. But we, as a community, have the authority to decide what the zoning is gonna be or what have you. And for me, it's really about the general, the general plan. The general plan, we've been working on for years to get Hawthorne Boulevard, the Boulevard to what it looks like today. You know, when you drive down Hawthorne Boulevard, when we put in those nice trees and all the greenery, we was the talk of the South Bay. The next step, of course, is to bring businesses to Hawthorne Boulevard to take advantage of the millions of trips, daily trips, and may not be a million, but you understand what I'm getting at, that go through Hawthorne Boulevard. Not just our residents, but people from Palos Verdes all the way to downtown or whatever may go through used Hawthorne Boulevard. And that's why we changed the general plan. We realized that we're not taking advantage of this, and so, we don't have the growth opportunities. So, when we move, when we move land, our inventory, what we don't have, from having the growth opportunities, it's counterintuitive to me, not only from the housing standpoint, but just the economic development standpoint. And I can appreciate the fact that this property's been vacant for years. But I also appreciate that if you put that on the market today, it's gonna do something. It's not gonna be vacant. And I'm not suggesting that forcing the applicant to sell his property. I'm not suggesting that, but I am suggesting that even with a lease, there are some projects that you can bring to the city. So, I don't really subscribe to the notion that just because this project has been vacant for so long that that's a reason to do something that we otherwise would not do or find that is consistent with the general plan when I believe, I haven't seen to the contrary, that it is consistent with the city plan, the general plan. That's not a reason to do so. Because I believe there's opportunities after, whether it's a long-held lease or sale of the land. Because you can keep the property, I got cousins in Oklahoma that property is vacant, been vacant for years, years. That's because they chose to have it vacant. But any day now, they could just decide to work some type of agreement out, a long-term lease or to sell the property, right? Those are personal decisions and business decisions people make or what have you. So, I can't really subscribe just because it's been vacant that that's a reason to do something that I think would be, that better be Jesus. Okay. I wouldn't, thank you. I wouldn't wanna do something that I otherwise would think would be counterproductive, you know, for this community just because the property has been vacant, especially knowing that property and land, especially in California, is a premium. Oh, it's a hot commodity, hot commodity, even if you're leasing. I don't know what other projects they can come up with besides the car wash, but it's hard for me to believe that this is the only project and that they, we can't come up with a project and working together that will be compatible with the general plan, that would get us where we wanna be in terms of being the heart of the South Bay and the Boulevard pulling its weight economically, you know, in the city. That's all I wanna say, for now. Did you wanna add something?
Oh, I do, finally. This is for the city manager and the city attorney. If we decided to go with option three, on option three, would our former city manager stopped us from doing, or stopped us from doing the economic fiscal? That's this one we got today, right?
Right, so you have now two economic studies. One, obviously, from Will Dan, one that the applicant submitted from Cosmon. So, that covers that aspect of it.
Okay, what about the land use? Do we do that? Well, Mr. Moore, there's three things we wanted to do, and we kinda put the brakes on it. Was it the land use? I know it was traffic study was one.
We would still need, we would still need to do the traffic study and still need to do the peer review for the noise study. Those are the two that would be left.
Right.
That's correct. That is correct.
I think before the council makes any decision, these should be done. So, we have, we're at 98%, let's be at 100% so we know all the impacts, the pros and cons of this. So, I would, I don't know if we need to close session or whatever, but I recommend they do option, well, I guess three, there's no numbers, revise.
Well, here's the, if I may, the issue that, my first thought on that. If I believe that the project is inconsistent with the general plan, the traffic study will not remedy that. No matter what the traffic study hailed, that would not remedy that if I believe it's inconsistent with the general plan. So, therefore, a traffic study would just be an exercise because at the end of the day, it still would be inconsistent with the general plan. Because the traffic study does not necessarily make it consistent or inconsistent with the general plan. It just simply says how you have to mitigate the traffic. If there is, if there is traffic issues, you have to mitigate those traffic issues, right? So, it doesn't necessarily eliminate, you know, or, well, approve or disapprove a project, at least in most cases. So, I don't necessarily know, and I don't wanna just delay a project just so we can do a study because if it's, like I say, I'm being redundant. That's not gonna make it more consistent.
Why, just wanna make sure we have all our i's, d's, t's crossed in case something happens down the road.
Well, we would have to do that, even if we approved it. They would have to have the study, the sequel, none of the kind of stuff, right? Yeah. Yeah, so you would have to do that.
Okay.
Whether we approve, if we approved.
That's it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
One quick thing. In order to attract new businesses, we need to show that we're working with the businesses that are currently applying at the city and make Hawthorne Corridor a little bit nicer because right now, we have a lot of empty spaces. So, my, I'm a great believer that if you allow the corridor to look nice, you're gonna attract those businesses that you really want. Their presentation, it's, I don't mind those colors. It looks nice. And it's gonna attract other businesses. You're gonna have people from Gardena, Redondo, maybe Hawthorne, coming into the city to go to the car wash. If we want Lawndale to move up, we need to bring people from the outside. And the one way to do it is allow new buildings, new construction, and new businesses.
Okay. You mind if I, I'm commenting on that? I can appreciate that. So, what are you really speaking of? Sometimes when you have a business or a project, you have the multiplier effect, right? So, the question is, does a car wash has a multiplier effect? And if so, what is that effect? When you have housing, you do have a certain multiplier effect. Because if you have a housing where you previously didn't have a house, and all of a sudden, you have, I'm just making up a number, 300 new consumers, patients, you're gonna all of a sudden have a coffee shop. You're always gonna have other businesses. Or maybe the business that opened up and closed at a certain hour may decide they need to expand their hours and hire more people, what have you, because obviously, you have more potential customers. So, my question would be, what is the, if any, the multiplier of the car wash? I could be wrong, but from what I understand is there's no multiplier effect from a car wash. If so, very little. People don't say, "There's a car wash there, so let me bring my business next to the car wash so that I can enjoy that synergy from the car wash." Like, for instance, if you got a restaurant, right? You may have a restaurant. Well, a coffee shop may decide, hey, they got a new restaurant there, right? And especially if there's housing above, let me open my coffee shop. Because if you go to the restaurant, you may need some coffee afterwards or what have you. You have whatever the coffee, beanie, tea, leaf, or whoever your, whatever your preference is or what have you. But that would attract them. But a car wash, I don't know if we have that same type of dynamics from, you know, other businesses saying, "I got to be next to there. That's what the action is. I need to be there and open up my business there." Or, I'm a merchant with a building, let me change my land use, right? And get, after the, obviously, after the lease run out, right? And let me exercise my options to get some other tenants in that's compatible or that can take advantage of that new operations that's by me or what have you. I don't know if that's true with a car wash. So, unless someone kinda tell me the difference, I'm not an expert in multiplier effect for car washes, but that's what I've been told.
And I did have one other point I wanted to make. Speaking of the general plan, and I think one of the applicant speakers mentioned on this is the idea of the market and what the market currently allows for, what it's currently attracting. And I believe at one point, actually, there was a limit on car washes. And I think that that was reversed during the time because of the crash, the housing crash. And so, it allowed again for car washes because there was obviously something that impacted everybody. And at that point, we kind of just wanted any kind of business. And so, I kind of thinking now, the housing prices are really inflated. And I can't help but think that there's eventually gonna be a correction to the market. And, you know, looking at, okay, well, we want retail. Retail has drastically changed, as we've seen during the pandemic. More people ordering online. More people seem to be attracted with the whole experience. If they're gonna go out of their houses, it has to be something that they, you know, take out the family and outing. And I only bring up these things because, you know, it's, we have the potential to deny the project and it's vacant. And I can't help but think that there's some type of correction that's looming eventually with the way the market is looking now. You know, there are certain things that, yes, we look at the general plan, but there potentially are other outside forces, whether it be a pandemic, whether it be a crash, housing crash, that we can't control. And so, that's partially what I look at is, I don't know that this will be there 50 to 100 years. I would like to think that Elon Musk is gonna create some other means of transportation within that time, and it's really gonna change the city. So, I think that's my concern with, how many businesses do we look at that actually have stood the test of times? Maybe the buildings have, but, you know, it's one of those things where things really change drastically and it's, sometimes it's out of our control and we kind of morph to however that impacts us. I just wanted to make that point as well.
Yeah, thank you for making that point. Is there any more additional comments? Why don't I do this while we collect our thoughts? If the applicant wanna make any remarks on our comments, we wanna make sure this, everyone has their say.
Good evening again. Sherri Bonstall from Jeffrey Mangles. I do appreciate all of the discussion that you're having. And I can tell that you're taking this really seriously and you're considering the general plan, you're considering the uses that you want in your city. I do wanna point out a couple issues. The first is, you know, we are consistent with the economic element because we did our study and the city did a study, and we know that we can meet the amount of taxes that you would have in the highest feasible use of the property. So, we are fully compliant with the economic element. It seems as if currently, you're concerned that you're not gonna be consistent with the housing element because it's been identified as arena site. We've put in the record a number of times that it no longer qualifies as arena site because it's been on the list for the entire last cycle, and it was not developed with housing because it's not feasible to put housing here. If you deny it because it's not consistent with general plan, because it's not consistent with the housing element, because it's not housing, it means we can't do any commercial uses on the site. It means any single site you wanna put, you wanna put a restaurant here, you wanna put a retail here, you are saying in this decision, if you're denying us because we're not consistent with the housing element, that only housing can go on this site. And so, we can't put a restaurant here. That would be inconsistent. And I don't think that that is what you're trying to say. I think you're trying to say that you would potentially want a different use here. But when you're talking about Hawthorne Boulevard and wanting to turn it into this fantastic lush, you know, retail center, that's not gonna come here if you're denying it just because that there's not housing on the site. And there are plenty of ways, I can, I could find you numerous different sites where you can add the housing that you would have otherwise put on the site, and you can meet your housing element. I know that you have, you know, two, more than 2,000 units you have to find in your city. But with SB 9 and a number of the new bills that have passed, there are a lot of different methods to meet. It doesn't mean that every single site that's on Hawthorne Boulevard, that's in yellow, that you've identified for housing, it doesn't mean every single one of those sites has to only use housing. If you deny this project because of housing, you have to deny every single other commercial use on every single site that has yellow on it if it's not housing. And you're basically just turning Hawthorne Boulevard into a housing site. And there is a lot of benefit to having housing on your main, on your main street. But it can't be at the expense of having any future commercial uses on any of these sites because you're gonna deny this one project because it's not housing and you don't find it consistent with the housing element. And so, I also wanna mention that you have to review- And so um I also want to mention that you have to review this project with the codes and the general plan that were in effect on the date that it was deemed complete. This was filed, I don't know, two years ago. It was deemed complete in September of twenty twenty? Is that right? Yeah, October of twenty twenty. So you have to look at your zoning that was in effect on that date. You have to look at your general plan that was in a d- in effect on that date. You know, I understand that you adopted your housing element um in your last session. And I, you know, I listened to all of that debate and all of your concerns about all of that. Um, but that doesn't affect this application that was before, you know, was deemed complete, you know, eighteen months earlier. Uh, and also, uh, well, that, you know, that hell, that housing element is still under review. I know that the city has approved that, and these are your goals. But the housing allocation in that can can be modified. And it can be moved around. Um, and it will be, you know, in the next eight years, you're going to determine some of these sites, you'd rather have a different use on them. And you can make that decision at the city council, and you'll find other places for this housing. And some of this housing will actually, you know, be constructed. I mean, the goal is two thousand units. But there will be some good pro- housing projects constructed, potentially, you know, in the future. Um, but it's been shown that this particular site is not the site to put your housing on. I mean, the only kind of housing that could actually be here on leased land is some kind of, you know, temporary transitional housing site. And, you know, that doesn't meet the goals, your arena goals, and that doesn't meet, you know, what your goal is for for the specific plan. Um, I do want to say, you know, if if we move forward with this project, that we will do the studies that are necessary. We will, of course, design whatever is needed to make sure that that the neighbors have, um, you know, a quiet buffer between them. Um, our noise study has shown that, you you know, you won't hear the vacuums at all. I know there's concerns about the structure itself. But we will fully insulate it so that it won't be heard, you know, anything louder than the street noise and all the surrounding neighbors. And we will make sure that that is in effect, and we will have conditions that ensure that. Um, and you will have an active owner. Uh, Tim will will be very involved and will make sure that the neighbors are happy. This is, you know, you know that he's going to be an excellent um, an excellent tenant and that he's going to be very engaged in this project. And so, um, you know, we ask you to consider this, that meets all of the zoning code requirements and that we've gone through every length to provide every study that has been asked of us. And we will provide additional studies that you want if, you know, you vote to approve this project and move forward with a development agreement. So thank you for your time.
Let me ask you um this question now, if if I may, just a point of clarification. You mentioned about the highest and best use. I think you were alluding to that through the development agreement that you would um remit to the city, I think it was forty thousand or whatever it is. Um, and is that's based, what is that based on? Is that based on, is that based on what we would get from the property? If it was developed into s- something else and?
Right, so the highest and best use, I meant that the most amount of taxes you could get from a feasible use, considering all the different taxes. Um, and we evaluated in our study, a Cosmont evaluated a, you know, a mixed-use residential um and commercial project based on the existing zoning and what can be built there, well, which is, I think, about around forty units. And they also evaluated um retail or restaurant use and determined that actually the mixed-use project is going to give you more taxes. So the restaurant, retail or restaurant use was was less taxes. And so we offered to compensate the city for the difference between the the mixed use that's going to provide you the most tax benefit and and what the car wash would otherwise provide.
Okay, uh, thank you for that clarification. So I'm I'm just thinking of um back to, there was another project where there was a vacant building. And the applicant wanted to quote-unquote make the city whole based on what the use of that particular land was. And it was the anchored, I'm just calling it the anchored price, um, that they wanted to give the city was based on the highest tax on revenue from the previous um tenant who had been there for, I don't know, maybe ten, twenty years or what have you. Um, that plan didn't go through. Today, there's a tenant there that's far surpassed what the um the current tenant. So had we took that that deal, which by the way was only for like, I think, like twenty years or whatever it was, we would have did ourselves a disservice because the the operation there now is a retail in you got trinkets that you buy for ninety-nine cents or below or a dollar, whatever from below versus apparel that's easily, you know, hundreds of dollars or what have you. The tax revenue does not compare. So that was one thing I remembered that I'm glad we didn't go for that deal. Because we would have been kicking ourselves. First of all, it's a better use of the land. And we derive more um tax revenues from the land. So that's why I was asking the um, what was that number um 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 based on? What kind of uses was this um based on? Because it seems kind of low to me. That's just just me. And then not knowing what the future will hold. Because once it, once it's gone, it's gone, um, out of that opportunity. So that's why I was wondering where where those numbers came from. Um, but thank you for that clarification.
Sure, and we, just to note, the cities, the city did their own study, uh, and they had even less taxes proposed. Um, we did our study just to confirm the city numbers and actually provided you with our study, which showed significantly more tax benefits from the project. And so, you know, we're agreeing to the higher number. If there is some other issues that you want us to analyze those, you know, it's possible to do that, but we we do feel like this is the use that would give you the most amount of taxes on the site. And so that's why why we used it.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that clarification. I do have one question of the city attorney, um, just a point of, not a point of clarification, just for my edification in the bodies. Um, it was mentioned that the project was deemed complete in twenty, I think it's like twenty twenty, and that we're obligated to apply, I'm just using the word standards, um, that was in effect in twenty twenty, um, when it was complete. Can you speak to when was this item deemed complete, whatever that means? I'm not really sure what that means. Um, and then if it was deemed complete in whatever year, what is our obligation to apply? The standards or the play, the the rules as it is today?
Yes, sir. I I'm I'm going to defer to staff on uh what the deemed complete date was. Um, the Longdale Municipal Code has a provision that does say that the standards uh in effect or the code provisions in effect on the date that a project is deemed complete will be used to judge the project. So that that is in your code. Um, uh, the applicant's attorney stated that correctly. And I, as I say, I'm going to defer to um city manager and the the acting director on the the completion date.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, uh, counsel, I believe it was uh October of nineteen, Jared, is that correct? Two thousand nineteen, the project was deemed complete to move forward. Went through the site plan review process, and then we uh had the applicant thereafter file for the entitlements.
Okay, so two thousand nineteen.
Is that correct, Jared? Two thousand nineteen, October? I think Rafael Garcia was the the planner that reviewed the project.
So then it 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 raises a question to me, uh, if it was deemed complete in two thousand nineteen, and we're saying that it's inconsistent with the the general plan, which I believe it is, then it raises a question to me. Is it inconsistent? Is it the the opinion of the the staff, the staff's view that is inconsistent with the general plan as it um was constituted in twenty nineteen?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, it is inconsistent with the general plan, the twenty fourteen, twenty twenty-one arena cycle. So that's what we looked at when we looked at the project.
So uh, I, let let me put that in different language. Um, the housing element that you recently changed uh was not the basis for the finding of inconsistency. It was the previous housing element that, as the director says, was in in place at that time. In addition, the economic element, if you're taking that into account, uh, has remained the same through that timeframe. So there there have been no changes there. So those two elements are the two thousand nineteen timeframe elements. Um, no changes were taken into account from staff's position. And what's in front of you, for your thoughts, uh, are based on pre-existing law, nothing new or changed.
And one more thing to clarify, um, if we wanted to reuse the same site on another um arena cycle, we can, there is a law, state law, that allows you to reuse a site twice, um, as long as you allow it by right without a special use permit. So a housing project could be allowed by right.
Okay. So just so I can make sure that I'm keeping it all together. So w- we're saying that the project is inconsistent with the general plan of twenty nineteen, not necessarily for the ha- the um the housing elements that we just adopted, but the housing elements then in the economic development elements, twenty nineteen, which the economic development elements has not changed. Um, even if they had changed, we're applying the twenty, they were, they're not consistent with twenty nineteen, which is what we should be applying. That's what it sounds like. Would you agree with, we should be applying with the twenty nineteen?
So you should be applying the twenty nineteen element. But you can make it consistent by finding a different location for those housing units that were identified to be on the site, number one, which is an easy fix. There's plenty of locations where you can locate them. So it's easy to make it consistent with the housing element by just identifying a different site to locate them on. And number two, if you deny this project the same way the planning commission did, solely because it doesn't comply with the housing element, you are saying only housing can go on this site. If we bring a restaurant back, it's not consistent with the housing element. If we bring a retail back, it's not consistent with the housing element. You can only have housing on this site, and we've shown it's not feasible. And infeasibility, because it would have to be leased, right, and the financials, it would not work out financially. No one is going to loan, you know, on a leased site. It makes it that it doesn't comply with requirements to qualify for arena, because you have to have feasible sites. You know, when the, when the state is reviewing your housing element to make sure it's combyable with arena, if we gave them evidence that this was a site that had been owned for seventy years and it can only be leased, they would determine it's not eligible. It has to be financially feasible to qualify for arena.
Okay.
You know, and so because of that, it's easy to find that it's consistent with the housing element because you just relocate the the housing units that were identified inappropriately for this site someplace else. And then your housing element is fully qu- is fully um complied with. But, I mean, at this point, if this is your only finding, because you don't want a car wash, you're denying it because it's not housing, you you literally can't have a restaurant or or any other non-housing use here. You're you're dooming this site to say that it can only be housing because you can't possibly locate those forty units anyplace else.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So I would ask um, um, first of my uh attorney, um, what the thoughts are. Would we be um a detriment to the site if that was the case? But let's remove, before I have the um the attorney to opine on that, let's remove the housing elements. How do you speak to the um economic um development elements, which I think it's inconsistent with?
So the economic development elements, right.
Inconsistent is inconsistent.
Right, so the economic development element um is, you know, are you are you putting the highest and best use tax-wise on the site? And because we're willing to enter a development agreement to make up any tax difference between what the city determines is the most tax they can make for the site and what our use generates, you're fully consistent with the economic element because we're offering it as part of a development agreement. You're allowed it, you're allowed by state law to put that in, that kind of um funding into a development agreement.
Now, would that be future, let's say hypothetically, we say, y- yes, whatever that gap is, whether it's the forty thousand, I don't know if it's forty thousand, it could be, whatever it is. Is there a way to re- reevaluate that? Let's say happen, what happens in in ten years? And and you do the numbers and say, well, that's easily way um greater than forty thousand. Is there a period that we could a- adjust that number? Because once you, like the the previous proposal from someone from an applicant, we would have been locked in. Of course, there was a sunset on that one for like twenty years or whatever it was, but we would have been locked in. No matter how the market changed, right, if if all of a sudden it was advantageous for, for, not advantageous, it would be in our best interest to 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 have uh more to make up for the the lost in tax revenue, uh, potential, lost in potential tax revenue, then we would have been stuck set, basically, at that rate.
Right, uh, well, this is a different situation because we're not taking an existing usage that's already on a site and and just taking those numbers. We actually did two different economic studies with renowned economists, and the city did one, and we did one, and and arrived at this number. Um, and it's not, you know, what potential uses could come every single year for the next twenty years. It's, you know, in October of twenty nineteen, if we had proposed a different use, what use could we have proposed that would have gotten approved, that was feasible, that would have given you the most taxes? And that's how, you know, that's what we evaluated in our report. And actually, we evaluated it um based on, you know, today's numbers, which are even higher, you know, for the revenue coming in. And we evaluated retail and restaurant and residential and took the highest number.
So it sounds like the answer is, um, yes, you would be locked in because you're basing it on what kind of project you could do today and what that would would generate um if you did that alternative project.
Right, I mean, that is what we're proposing. If there's an alternative proposal from the city or from, you know, the city manager, you know, in terms of of what you need to meet your economic the economic analysis on this project, then we can negotiate and have a a a discussion based on, you know, actual numbers and.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm I'm clear, because it 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 takes me a while to to digest everything. Let me swing to the city manager, and then I just don't want to jump in there, I mean, the city attorney, um, about, um, I lost how I was going to phrase it, but the issue is whether or not if we deny this project based on the elements, not satisfying the elements, what does that, does that mean you're locked in?
So the applicant raises a point that, and housing laws are always changing, so we have to take that into account. Um, but if you were to deny solely on the general plan finding that the commission made, which is that you need the site for housing units, then it could very well be that in the future you would have to have a mixed-use development that had housing units plus whatever commercial went with that. If instead you make your general plan inconsistency findings, if you want to go this way, um, that both the housing element and the economic element can't be made, or can't be met, uh, then you have more discretion uh in the future because you could obviously find an economic element that can be met that would lead you to be more willing to um modify the housing element so that the housing element could be met as well. As the applicant said, right now, you meet the housing element not on its face, but by making changes to it in order to uh reallocate the sites away from it. So um, from my perspective, my analysis of this, if you're making multiple findings uh of inconsistency, then the issue that she raises uh would not be of concern. Um, I hope that answers your question, sir.
Open up anything, anything they want to want to add? Yeah, we'll let, we'll let.
Um, can Tim also speak directly?
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, so so I'd just like to clarify a couple of things based on comments from councilwoman as well as a mayor. First off, the development agreement wo- would sunset. So you wouldn't be locked into a car wash there for a hundred years. It would be a probably ma- ideally, it would match the life of the lease, which is a thirty-year lease. So we'd have a thirty-year agreement. The city, uh, so so then after thirty years, maybe you don't renew it. Maybe at at year thirty, maybe a a ten-story apartment building. So uh, it could go on that site because it's a transitory use so that you're not locked in for fifty or a hundred years. However, to mayor's point about the multiplier effect, I just want to make a couple of points on that. Um, I know, uh, mayor, when you ran for for uh council and then became mayor, that one of your concerns, one of the platforms that you ran on was Longdale being a, I hate to say it, but a drive-through community where people were driving through the community and not stopping. The multiplier effect comes in because as we see businesses move to the service model, you've, you're all well well aware of Amazon, what's happened to retail, that even just in the last eight or ten years, retail projects that could have worked on the site just no longer function. So having a car wash where people come in to do a car wash, they either go electrically charge their car or a gas station. Uh, they go to the QuickTrip for, you know, the convenience store, restaurants, they give a breakfast. I know myself and my family, when we do car washes, my son is sitting over here. When they were young and we were doing uh express car washes, washing our cars, it was a family event. So the family would come together, we'd go to the car wash, we'd wa- So the family would come together, we'd go to the car wash, would wash our car, you know, all of us together, we all, you know, the boys liked to vacuum, I'd do the windows, my wife would clean out the, the coin drawer and keep all the change. Somehow, the wife always keeps all the change, $10 bills if she finds it. But it's, it's a, it's a way to get people out into the community, onto your main thoroughfare, stopping in your city, and then when they're stopping, well, let's, let's stop in at the coffee shop that, that you want to attract in, in that community. Stop in at the restaurant. Oh, there, there's the McDonald's across the street, or there's, or Spire. I like Spire's restaurant. I've probably eaten there every time I've come into this town. So you, you get these multiplier effects with that use. Congresswoman, or, yeah, councilwoman does not need to worry about it being a car wash in 100 years, unless, of course, in 30 years, it's been such a good multiplier effect in your community, that you say, well, let's give it a try for another 10 years. Cosmont did a study, and the city did a study, there's two economic studies done, and the city's study actually was a lower dollar amount than what our study showed. We knew that it was a lower dollar amount. We could have, we could have eliminated our highest dollar amount and, and more matched with the city's dollar amount. I can let Cosmont tell you the exact dollar amounts, because I don't have them in front of me, but it was something like 57,500 per year versus the city's study, which said $42,000 per year for, for the economic impact. But we want to be part of this community. We want safe streets. We want programs for the kids. We want the libraries funded, youth sports. We want a nice community, because a nice community is going to attract residents that are going to use a facility like ours. So back to the mayor's platform of not having Longdale as a drive-through community. This is one of those elements on your premier street in town. It's a beautiful site. The colors, we like them. We, we worked with staff on them. It wasn't, this actually wasn't our first choice in how we wanted the site to work, but after working with staff, we grew to love this site. We're more than willing to work with the neighbors. We don't want upset neighbors. We don't want calls to the, the city like the, the poor construction company. You know, every meeting we've been into, that poor construction company's been, been talked about with road noise and stuff like that. We would be absolutely happy to put a, a sound wall, or a tree barrier, or whatever the city, city suggested. If there's one or two residents in there who just couldn't, you know, they slept during the day, we'd replace the windows for that resident's apartment. And, and make, we don't want a, a resident who can't sleep during the day. I know you talked about shift work, you're nursing. We'd replace the windows with double-pane windows. That apartment complex is an old apartment complex. We, we would, we would help fund some of the improvements to that apartment complex if there's a couple residents that, that had that situation. But we're more than willing to do a noise barrier, you're not locked into a 50 or 100-year, and I understand that things change. No one knew that retail was going to be destroyed 10 years ago, 15 years ago, but small retail shops, it is extremely difficult for them to make, make their numbers work out. So a project like this will have a very real multiplier effect, where you're bringing people from the South Bay, as they come through your community, now they stop. Then they hit the gas station. Then they have lunch, or breakfast, or coffee, or the new cookie store, or the bagel shop. So it is a very definite multiplier. We, we exceed the city's economic numbers. You know, we're $1.67 million over the life of this, of this lease. And then at the end of there, you can say, we're done, we're going to put in whatever the next new thing is that happens in 30 years from now. I'm not a, I'm not Elon Musk, so I can't predict what's going to be the next, next big thing, but at the end of 30 years, you'll be able to change it. I, I do appreciate your time, that you allowed me to speak one more time. If you have specific numbers on the economic analysis, I really wish you'd talk to Cosmont. We've talked to other consultants. They are the premier economic study group in Southern California, and I think staff would agree with that. And their numbers were higher than the numbers that the city came up with. And we still published our numbers, which were higher, and we offered our higher numbers.
Okay.
Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, absolutely. So we had a pretty robust discussion.
Point of order, if you may.
Well, you can't call a point of order, only members can call a point of order, but I'll go ahead and take, what, what do you want to say real quick?
We just have an extra hour to discuss this. Some of the questions primarily could push the project, and the public has had no chance to rebuttal this.
Well, you're welcome to make any comments, if you, if you would like.
Okay.
But...
This is not Chicken Little, and the sky is not falling. If this project's not approved, that doesn't mean that this property won't get developed. It will get developed. I have no question about that. I'm not a prophet. I can't tell you when it's going to happen, if it's going to be next year or 10 years from now. But you made outstanding points, in my opinion, that if it doesn't meet the current general plan, then it's a violation of law. Are we going to throw the laws out? Are we going to have total chaos in the city because somebody wants to build something? That doesn't make any sense to me. And, and as I said earlier, the whole premise of this is that they want to lease the property. They don't want to build nothing. They want to lease the property. It is definitely economically feasible to build multi-unit with commercial, that's another fallacy in what the lady said there. It's not an all or nothing. We can have multifamily with commercial, just like it is on 153rd Street. So it's not all or nothing. And, and I want to jump on, on your point again and again and again. Are we going to go by the law? Okay, it's the 2019 general plan? It doesn't meet that. If you want to go by that, I don't see how you've got any legal choice but to deny this, because it does not meet the current law, the law for when the project was approved. It's, it's clear to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, your honorable mayor. Thank you so much for giving me some time. First of all, I'm speaking, listening to a couple of open public speaking. First, we heard from a traffic, I mean, from a sound study that the sound was, the sound study that they provided to the city was totally flawed. There was many points that were addressed that I didn't hear from the other group even mentioning on that. And also, we're getting an overwhelming of all these people that wore T-shirts, that got tired, that left, that they're totally opposed, they're totally opposed to the project. It just, you can't justify the use. And furthermore, we also heard from a CQ attorney, which I looked into, is one of the most predominant CQ attorneys in California, that we totally forgot about the whole CQ Act. It's not CQ compliant. And I think that votes of this, of us City Matters, council was voted in by the constituents, and the constituents do not want this project. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Okay. Any other members of the, the public, besides the applicant, like to make some comments? Okay, thank you. Well, we had a pretty robust discussion on the item, and lest any other members have any further discussion, I'll entertain a motion if there's, no other discussion.
Just a point of clarification. We have three potential, and we need to direct. Does it go by someone making a motion and voting? Because...
Yes. What, what, what staff is seeking is, is a motion second, and a vote by the council to either approve the project and direct staff to finalize the project, negotiate a development agreement, do the environmental findings, and then bring back to you a resolution and development agreement for approval. Or a motion to deny the project and direct staff to return with a resolution of denial. Or, as council member Kearney had mentioned, move to revise the project and come back for further public hearings. I, I know the mayor was not, the mayor wanted a, a yes or no, but we did include that as an option if tonight's hearing lent itself towards that. But on page two, you have, you know, one, the first one listed there is an approval motion, the second one is a denial motion.
If, if I may, I would like to motion to revise the project for recommendation.
Can I ask a clarification?
Yes.
If that one is the motion, it basically, like you said, we give them more requirements to fulfill, then bring it back for approval, or is it...
That's right. So that, that one, rather than saying tonight, yes, we're going to approve it, you're saying, go revise it based on what you've heard tonight, negotiate the development agreement, do the CQ study, finish the work that needs to be done, but we've also heard some issues from the public that require some changes to the project. So make those changes, and then come back and present it to the council. The council's not saying, yes, we, we absolutely will accept it. Neither are you saying you'll deny it. You're saying, go make these changes, staff, go do the work that needs to be done to put it in final form, and then bring it back to us so we can consider a, a potential adoption at that time.
So in the motion, we would have to specifically direct, we want a traffic study, we want environmental impact report.
I, I would just, on the top of page three, there's some draft language.
Yeah, move to modify.
I guess I kind of share similar concerns with Robert about delaying it just much further. I think, I don't know if there's the option, the way I would look at it is approving it, but making sure that they're meeting requirements with regards to traffic studies and environmental impact report, and making sure, but I don't exactly know how that works.
Or, that, that would really be the first one. The first one says finalize design and paint color issues, negotiate a development agreement. When those issues are resolved, finalize conditions of approval, and bring back the resolution adopting the CQ findings and approving the project as conditioned, along with approving the development agreement. So we would still go through the process with them of whatever studies are needed to impose conditions. The staff would work on that with them. Our office would work with the city manager on the development agreement for the financial purposes, and then you'd come back. That one really says there aren't major changes that need to be made. The revision one kind of says, hey, there's a lot that needs to be changed in order for there to be a yes. This says, we just need to make sure our Ts are crossed and our Is are dotted, and then we can, we can give it a yes. So staff, we're essentially approving this, but go get the work done, and as long as you and the applicant agree on the development agreement, bring it back to us. You will have a public hearing, because a development agreement's adopted by ordinance, so the public will get a new public hearing notice for it, and then that whole package will come back to you for, for final review and approval. But you, you're essentially giving the nod to the project tonight, but having us dot those, dot those Is. Yes, sir.
Under, under C, is that what you were referring to?
Yes.
Not, not A, not, well...
Yeah, that...
That's basically it. A is basically approval, but go get the work done. C is, this needs so much work that we can't say approve or deny tonight.
Quick question, then. On, on A, then, could we also request for them to work with the sound barrier and all that, or does they have to go on C?
Those, those sound like conditions of approval that we would need, because we're going to need to do reviews of the sound study. We're going to need to finish some studies that weren't done. Not the economic ones, those, as you've heard, have been done, but the other studies need to be finished. But essentially, you're saying, yes, this project is approved, just go get the work done, and then when we bring it back, we're not going to say no, unless, frankly, unless we come back with the applicant saying we can't agree on something. At that point, you might have to say no, but, but essentially, you would give it the nod tonight.
Yeah, because that would, yeah.
Does that change your motion?
That will change, I'm sorry, that will change my motion, then. A motion to approve the project.
And, and to direct us to go and take the steps to...
Correct.
...addition it to the environmental and negotiate development agreement.
Correct.
And I'll second it.
So the, so the motion's been made by Quervis, that we approve the project, and seconded by, as far as any debate or discussions, I have some discussions, undebating discussions. For me, the issue still, still is one of whether or not it's consistent with the, the general plan, whether that be today's general plan or 2019 general plan, specifically not only the housing issue element, but the economic development elements. I haven't, I'm not satisfied that it, that it meets the, the economic development element. So for me, all these other stuff that you have to do as a condition of approval, you would have to do that anyway, so that doesn't really get us any closer to being in conformity to the, the general plan, or the, yeah, the general, general plan, because you have to do all this sequel-related items anyway. So to me, it doesn't solve my issue of being consistent with the, with the general plan. So that's my discussion. Anyone have any other...
I have to concur with you, Robert. I, I agree with you.
Okay. Anyone else have any, any other?
I could, I could have gone along with C, but if we're going for the approval, I'd have to say we're not.
Okay.
So can we vote on each, but deny and approval?
I'll call for the vote.
Well, the motion is to, to approve the project, the A alternative, that's the motion. Okay, with that, unless there's any further discussion, I'm going to call, call for the motions, and this time, I will, I will vote, Madam City Clerk. Oh, I should say, oh, would the council please vote? That's the phrase.
Okay, the motion fails with three no votes and two yeses.
Okay. With that, is there, is there any follow-up, the city attorney or city manager?
We actually still need to, we need to take some action, and that would either be then to deny or to direct revision. So it would be either a, a motion to affirm the planning commission's decision and deny, directing us to return with a resolution of denial, or move to allow the applicant to make modifications, direct further studies, negotiate the development agreement with conditions of approval, do the CQ studies and bring it back to you, having made no, having taken no action tonight. No approval, no denial, just please go do the extra work and bring this matter back.
Okay, let me make sure I'm, make sure I'm clear on the, the council's wishes. So the, the motion was to approve the project. If we didn't approve the project, don't we stand that we have rejected the project?
Not, not until you actually take a, a motion in that regard, sir.
Okay, so...
We actually need, need a motion and second in that regard.
Okay, so you're saying that, okay, you can't just simply...
Yes, sir.
Okay, so there have to be a motion rejecting the project, denying the project. Okay, I get what you're saying, okay. So with that being the case, so, so that I'm consistent, I'm going to make the motion that we deny the project at this time, and obviously, if they want to bring us back another project, that'll be a totally separate, you know, issue, or whatever.
I'll second it, Robert.
Okay, so the motion's been made that we deny the project by pulling and seconded by Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, would the council please vote on the motion? I'm trying to make sure I didn't vote against myself. Yeah, I got to think these things through.
That motion passes with three yeses and two noes.
But I do want to thank the applicant and all those who participated in the, in the hearing. It was a tough decision. This is one of the toughest decisions we've had in a few years.
And mayor and council, we will work up a formal resolution of denial. That will come back to you at a future meeting, probably not your first meeting in March, probably your second meeting in March, and you will very likely find that on the consent calendar, because it's simply a resolution that memorializes the decision made to... because it's simply a resolution that memorializes the decision made, made this evening. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yeah, I can use a body break there. Now that you mention it, just, it just occurred to me about two minutes ago.
No, we got a lot more to go.
We're not done, right?
No.
Abby, you're doing it to me at five.
No, we do have one. We just have one, I think, item.
We didn't tell her because we didn't have a job.
We said eight o'clock.
We have, we don't have that much time.
We said eight AM, PM.
We're, we're next. What's next on your agenda?
No, that's it. The city manager's report and...
And all reports.
Yeah. Okay, let's, let's hear from our new city manager. Let's, we expect a, a full report.
I don't have any reports, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you again for having me. And I have a punch list, so I'll already get started on it tomorrow morning.
Okay, I was gonna say, you are already starting off, no report. We appreciate you though. Congratulations once again. I would say welcome to Lawndale, but you're already part of the family. Welcome back. Okay, let's hear from the council members. Let's hear from...
Okay. I attended three events this past couple of weeks. The first one was Lobby Trust at Oversight Committee, the LA County Sheriff's. The assessments for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. The sheriff's contract was steady, a steady eleven. But good news, the county and all other has dropped, it's gonna drop from four and a half to four percent. So we'll be saving a few dollars there.
Half percent.
I did the, the, the bench, I'm laughing at the bench. The bench dedication for Jerry White, fifty-six years with the Rotary. It was a great event. I think the bench was built for gnomes. It's about this big.
The, the kind that roam.
I think, yeah, okay, yeah. And then also, I attended the California Contract City Association Board of Director Meeting. Guest speaker was the, I think, president or vice president of the port. And he says everything's back on track with the containers out of sea, all sinking. And with that, so...
Councilwoman Suarez.
Um, I will, yes, I also attended the dedication of the bench for Jerry White. He was, it was, it was really nice seeing him. He had so many stories that he wanted to talk about. And his family had to pull him from the podium because he kept going on and on. But he was, you know, you can tell there were a lot of good years, and, and we really appreciate his service. The other event that, or the other meeting that I did do virtually was the South Bay Cities Council of Government Steering Committee, mainly discussing items that are to be placed on the Board of Directors meeting. But with that, I'll pass along.
Okay. Councilwoman Cuervis.
I did a training for the homeless count volunteer on the twelfth. I also participated in the bench dedication, which I thought it was gonna be a bigger bench, but then it ended up being the little midget. I'm sorry, no, 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 I apologize. The little bench. A small, no, no, I, sorry, I shouldn't have. Jerry, he, he made me remember my grandfather, telling his stories. And having to tell him stop because he wanted to tell all his stories. It was very nice. I attended the South Bay Cog Forum with Sheriff Villanueva. Very interesting. He brought up some good points, but I don't know, certain budget cuts, you know, are affecting our sheriff department. And also, the mandate for COVID vaccine is also affecting their staff. And they might have to cut more staff members if the mandate goes through. And I was also on the South Bay Cog Transportation Committee meeting, just listening to see what was the plan. One thing they asked is with the Olympic coming, to see if we want, if we had any comments about their transportation, to give them feedback on that. And that's all for me.
Okay. Madam Chair Tim, and Gorman.
I also attended with Councilmember Kearney down there, the Contract Cities regarding the, the port. And I was encouraged also with the information that was given at the port. I had a couple of issues that I wanted to bring up. Number one, fireworks. My fear is if this body is interested in considering putting the fireworks initiative on the ballot in November, I don't want to sit on that too long so that we might possibly lose the opportunity to put it on the November elect, uh, ballot. So I would like to see that come back, like the next council meeting, if at all possible, so that we could vote on it to see if it's the consensus of the, the body to put it on or what we want to do. That would give us enough time that we could begin tightening up again our firework. If it wasn't going to go on the ballot, then we could begin tightening it up and putting some work. Maybe we might even want to put a citizen group together, a study group, to work on this since it seems to be an issue that we keep hearing over and over again. And the next thing I wanted to bring up, also, the mayor and I both are on a committee for Caltrans. And the last time we met with Caltrans, we were going to schedule a meeting with both the sheriff's department and the California Highway Patrol. I don't want that to get lost. That is the very next step so that we get them working with us on the same page so we can move forward on how to deal also with the homeless. I'm working with the group of, I'm working with the Department of Transportation right now. His name is Roberto. And Roberto is trying to, we're having problems with the homeless there at one sixty-six, one sixty-second and Hawthorne Boulevard. Lots of hypodermic needles, lots of things that are, they're becoming very violent. And Roberto is trying to move, there's a scale from one to four for the homeless individuals as to which ones are the priority, and he's trying to get that place. That was over a week ago. I don't want that sitting in waiting. I'm going to be contacting him tomorrow. But in the meantime, I think Caltrans and our sheriffs and California Highway Patrol need to get together as well. That's another concern. The final one that I have tonight, mayor and I also sit on a committee with Metro. And Metro is getting ready, as all of you are aware, to do a walk, both down the row and also on Hawthorne Boulevard. It's a priority to the people in those affected areas, but I think it's a priority to every resident in Lawndale. I want them all to participate. If we fill up these walking tours, I would like to see Metro have to extend it and do a couple more since they're limited on space. I would like the city to put this applica, or this announcement of the tours on our website. And if we need graphics, I'm sure Mark would be open to providing us what we need so that it could get on our website as soon as possible.
Robert, can I piggyback on, oh, are you done?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, they did put a mailer out. They put it on all the fences for the walkthroughs.
Yes.
I signed up for the March second one through the row because I know that's where it's gonna go, but...
And they...
See, all the mailers on that.
And they also put out emails. If you were on their email list, you got it that way as well. So we got it in the mail, and that was supposed to go to not only every resident, but every owner.
Yes.
Yeah. We good? Okay, yeah, thank you. Yeah, my wife got the mailer too, so she's, she'll represent Team Pullin at one of those. I think it's the same. Yeah, I think it's the, I think it's the same one you, you gotta go to.
Mr. Mayor, really quick, I, I forgot something. I would like for staff to put together the cost of a new HVAC system for...
HVAC?
HVAC.
Oh, okay.
For the community center. It's been down for over a year. And I was there, and it's very cold. So I know we are, we don't have much staff members in there, many staff members, but I think we, we do need to, if we're gonna open the center, they need to have a new HVAC in there. Also, if I could get the numbers of how many families or how many people got vaccinated at our last vaccine clinic, that would be great because I believe there's gonna be a, a second one coming up. And I wanna put it out there and see if more people wanna come out and get vaccinated.
I wanted to offer also two more pieces of information. I'm glad you brought up the vaccines. There is an electronic vaccine card that you can get through the state of California. I'm getting a lot of people in my life ask for that link. And I would like that to also be on the city website. If they would go to myvaccinerecord.cdph.ca.gov and fill out a short form, you can have that vaccine record on your telephone. And it seems that most places, and it sounds like even in the restaurants, they're going to prefer seeing that electronic copy versus the little paper card that we're all carrying. So thank you for reminding me each early.
Very good. Okay, I got one minute left, okay. I, I too attended the, the bench dedication at the Fire Station on Twenty-One in honor of Jerry White, who is a retired firefighter.
Did you sit on the bench?
But, oh, no, I, I wasn't gonna be the one to break that bench. He's actually a Rotarian. The bench was actually provided by the Lawndale Rotary Club, which he and I both are Rotarians. And we had the honor of having supervisor Janice Hahn, who's also a Lawndale Rotarian there at the dedication as well. He's just a, he's a delight to talk with Jerry. Like you said, always have, you know, you know, wonderful stories and wonderful stories and wonderful stories and wonderful stories and wonderful stories. Just a breath of fresh air, a lot of, obviously, a lot of knowledge in the fire service, about the fire service and his life in general. He's just wonderful to speak to. So congratulations to Jerry White, and of course, his family was on hand as well. I attended the regular meeting of the Los Angeles Sanitation District. There was no real action there, report of action there, but regular duties. And I represented the city at the Taste of Soul, Inglewood.
Inglewood.
Inglewood had a Taste of Soul event for three days that ran congruent with the, the Super Bowl activities. Congratulations once again to the Inglewood City champs and Mayor Butts for the Rams bringing home the, the Super Bowl. They put on a, a great Super Bowl. It's definitely the Rams' house. In Lawndale, it's Lou's house, but California and in the country, it's the Rams' house.
Who's house?
I never heard of Cardinals' house. Does Cardinals have a house?
Right there.
Oh, they have a house, okay. I just, I just want to make sure. I just want to make sure. Okay, but they, they put on a wonder, wonderful weekend, Super Bowl weekend. So congratulations to Mayor Butts and the whole city council and the staff there and the city of, and the volunteers and the city of, of Inglewood in the Super Bowl. I wanted to follow up on, I was meaning to do this earlier. By EMI, the large sign company, the, the, the whole fits of the door portion of the Caltrans fence was, it looked like it was removed, but it was actually cut pretty nicely there. And someone was supposed to go out and take a look at it, but I haven't been able to go through there to see if they actually have taken care of that. So if we can get staff to, to follow up on that to see if Caltrans ever came out and repaired the, the gate. Because it's not just open, it's missing. Right, as if so, as if someone decided they needed the, the whole front of the gate. So if we can take a look at that. The owner is, of course, very concerned because, you know, there was attempted breach, you know, of their property. With that, that's all I have. Okay, we've been here for a minute. So let me find when we're gonna be back here. Okay, here we go. So with that, we are ready to adjourn. The next regularly, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Lawndale City Council will be held at six thirty PM on Monday, March seventh. Is that gonna be virtual?
I think... We don't know yet.
Okay, to, yeah, tune in for, as they call it, the location. Either here in these cities' chambers or virtual. Okay. I know. With that, this meeting is adjourned.